session for July 15, 2025 to order. For City Council and Barca Fire Protection District to order at 5:30 p.m. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, when we have the roll call?
Yes, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics as your elected governing board will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barca community and not for personal gain. Public comments of closed session. This is the time and place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on closed session?
We do have one, Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. My request is very simple. When the meeting comes back and you bring out closed session, could you address the closed session you had last week? You had, after you had your regular meeting, you went into closed session. Could you report out what happened? Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. With that, I'll call for motion to go into closed session.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
And motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into closed session.
There are two items regarding, one item of a dispute litigation related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. The council provided direction to staff and counsel but took no reportable action. The council also met regarding labor negotiations regarding all units and all unrepresented employees, provided a direction to staff and counsel but took no reportable action. And I'll also report out from the July 1st meeting the council met regarding labor negotiations, again, all employee units and all unrepresented employees and took no reportable action. And on an existing litigation item, Carrasco versus City of Barstow, there too, the council provided direction to staff and counsel but took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I call this City Council Barstow Fire Protection District meeting to order for July 15, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please all rise for our indication we don't, I'm sorry. Okay, we don't have any for invocations, so Councilmember Noble, would you please lead us in invocation?
Let's bow our heads. Most heavenly and gracious Father, we come before you this evening to say thank you for waking us up. Father God, we ask that you bless each and everyone as in the sound of my voice, that you guide them, understand that they continue to bless each as we move forward. Father God, we ask that you, those on their way, give them traveling graces that they come before this council. Father God, we ask that you watch over our sick and shut in and continue to bless them. Put your loving arms around them as you continue to heal them. We ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has passed one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law. Madam Clerk, will we have roll call, please?
Yes, all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approve the agenda. This is the time and place for the members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items, or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code Section 54954.2 subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline but which require immediate action, to be added by a two-thirds votes of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present. We have no presentations, so we'll move on to the general.
May we would want to vote to approve the agenda?
I'm sorry, call for a motion.
I also move on the agenda item.
Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Noble, a second by Councilmember Hernandez. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. General non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do. Our first speaker is Ms. Anna Fuzey.
Welcome, Ms. Fuzey.
Thank you. I want to thank the city for some of the upcoming renovations that are happening at the Barstow Senior Center. We really appreciate that. Some ADA upgrades, much needed. Closet drawers replaced, some things that really needed to be addressed. I also wanted to talk about social security. Councilman, sorry, Hernandez had asked about that last week. Social Security was taken out of our building last year by social security, not by us. We did everything we could. We, you know, complained, did all the things that we could do. They actually came and got the equipment, too. Those were social security cuts, not ours. And that's one of the reasons why the computers under Measure Q were so vital, because some of the stuff that people come in for with social security, we're now doing for the public, you know, getting them their letters, getting, you know, them signed up with an account. We're willing to do that, because now, I don't know if any of you know, you have to make an appointment. It's my understanding, you can't even go to Victorville anymore, travel over there and do a walk-in. You now must make an appointment. So we have the whole surrounding desert here that we're trying to accommodate with those changes. We do have inland legal services that still come, and I did pass out a brochure for you. It's undergoing some changes itself, so some of that may not be exactly accurate. But we do provide services to the entire community, not just to seniors. But that was such a valuable thing that we needed that unfortunately went away. I was going to talk about Measure Q money, but I know that we have a meeting on Thursday, so I'm going to leave it for that, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuzey.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to say, all five of you represent the people, but only one of you stands up and talks to the people, and that's Tex. People have brought problems forwards, and Tex has taken them on his shoulder and actually taken them around and tried to do right by the people. The other four of yous, I don't know what you're doing. But that's the way it goes. I brought out an issue concerning handicap parking, back and forth numerous times. At least I give Rose credit, she voiced her opinion on it. No one else has. No one says it's good, bad, or idea. So I'm kind of curious, do I have to file a complaint to get you to look at the item and tell me yes or no? Another thing is, the Browns are being targeted by code enforcement. They've come here numerous times asking about things. Nothing's been done. It's like it's falling on deaf ears. Nobody's pursuing it. I understand that they were supposed to get that property back alongside. You agreed to do it, but you haven't done that either. My last thing, I talked to them about it, they said, you said you didn't have the money to pay for somebody to do that. Well, if you've got money to pay for everything else, you've got money to pay for that. My next thing is the city manager. You need a secretary. You need somebody that's going to take your calls, because problem with Barstow people is, they're used to calling and either getting an appointment or an answer or something, but not to answer them is like disrespecting them. And if you want respect, you've got to give respect. And I see numerous things going on in Barstow, and I often wonder, why isn't the council doing, to me, you're not doing your job? Most of yous have been on there numerous years, four years, five years, 10 years, 16 years. Tex is the only one who's been here six months, and I think he's trying to do more for the people in six months than you people have done in all the years you've been here. It's not right that you come here with your concern, and the concern is not addressed. All you're given is a runaround. We'll take care of it. Humane society, they were going to advertise the dogs for adoption. You haven't done it yet. That's been going on for a while. IT, people are complaining about, the voice goes out. I thought we hired somebody for IT. What happened to that? And most of all, I want to know why I can't come in through the side door. And there's a sign posted there that says, that door is locked at 5:30.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Darren Fixted.
Welcome, Mr. Fixted.
Oh, good evening, Darren Fixted, Barstow, California. I attended the Measure Q, was on the committee, and was very interesting. In fact, Sidney, thank you very much. You were wonderful. But one of the issues that concerns me is, as a member, we had a council member here, Councilmember Williams, who seemed to have some side comments here during the whole process, in a negative way, jeering. And when it was over, yelled at me four different times, "I want to talk to you, I want to talk to you, I want to talk to you," as I'm heading out the door. I get out to the parking lot, and he's still yelling at me, and I turn around and I say, "What?" And I quote, "You will not disrespect me, and I've got some real good surprises coming to you. You watch." Now, I have no idea what that means, but I do know this, you can pick up the phone and have a meeting with me at any time. Second, what I do know that is, is harassment. That I do know. And charges could be filed, and restraining order. There's no reason for that behavior. You're not the boss. Okay? There's no excuse for that kind of behavior, and I'm not going to tolerate it. Okay? Period. So everyone else here has been professional with me. Some of you voted with us in the past on my different organizations, and some of you have not. That's the way it goes. I get it. Okay? But we're going to work together and we'll work positively. Otherwise, window number two at Taco Bell, I think it's open. I like that one. Someone also made a comment that, why is Adelanto so successful? What are they doing? Well, as desert manna, we've been involved with Adelanto for years on food and a lot of things. And I can tell you, there's an individual over there that is phenomenal. I wish he was working here. And the man's name is Jesse Flores. I've known Mr. Flores for a lot of years. So let's, you know, keep these things professional, let's work together. If there's an issue, pick up the phone, we'll go out and have coffee or whatever. Mr. Mayor, so far, I like what I see, and that's true, I did not vote for you. However, I think you've been doing a professional job, and we appreciate it. And there's a lot of great things coming up in the future. So thank you. I appreciate you hearing out.
Thank you, Mr. Fixted.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Gregg.
Welcome, Mr. Gregg.
Good evening, Mayor Tim Silva. You look really good in that chair, by the way. City Council, Chief of Police Kirby, new city manager and the rest of the city entourage. I am John Gregg, general manager of Highway Radio Heftel Broadcasting. Sorry, I have to go kind of fast, I've got a lot to cover. It felt it necessary to set the record straight and tell you the facts. July 4th celebration, thank you for all that you did to make it happen and for trusting Highway Radio with the city's advertising budget and playing the music for the fireworks show. K-Dud has gone and childish and called eight names and 100% of lives on Facebook. Excuse me. First, I was in touch with city employees three times on the day of the event, last time at 8:56 PM when I received the message, "Good to go" at 9:00. If anyone was unhappy with the music sync, you need to understand, it was not City of Barstow employees' fault and not Highway Radio's fault. Also, quick fact check, the music is always sent to us by the fireworks company. The radio stations never control the fireworks triggers, and that would be very unsafe and dumb. I was not able to bring the next item to your attention earlier because of a wife that worked for the city, and the old mayor was a childish, vindictive douchebag. Neither one of those problems exist in my world any longer. Thank you, God. We tell our kids, don't be bullies, and if you're being bullied, report it immediately. And yet, there is K-Dud trying to bully the city council and businesses of Barstow. Me personally, I have been lied about, falsely accused, and of truly ugly offenses, physically accosted and threatened by K-Dud employees. I also have 20 years of horrific stories from Barstow businesses about K-Dud's treatment of them. Recently, the city's July 4th media buy has come into their tyrannical rants yet again. Let's look at the history. Joe Gomez was mayor, K-Dud got 100% of the city advertising. Lawrence Dale and Mayor Julie was 50/50. Paul Courtney, 100% to K-Dud. Highway Radio would be happy to swap City of Barstow buys with K-Dud. They can have the July 4th buy of $1,000 a year, and Highway Radio would be happy to take the $12,000 a year for the next four years. Only seems fair, as I guarantee, we won't be building the city if we're off the air for a month like they did. It's kind of funny how I am asked to promote the city's events for free while the biggest racially equal asked to promote the city's events for free, while the biggest racially equality challenge troll farts this town has ever seen gets $1,000 a month. When do the guys that say nothing and just can only help the county and city win? That is the message the city wants to put out? If you scream and cry like a full-grown toddler with a megaphone, you'll get your way. I am disappointed, but not in the new people in charge. Shame on the old guard, and shame on anyone that does not stand up to bullies in every aspect of life. I would love to end with a movie quote, don't worry, it's not Die Hard or Dogma, but I can't. Instead, Highway Radio will still promote, advertise, show up, mic in hand, big smile on our face at any city event, even when it's transparently unfair, as we always have for 47 years in this community. Thank you for your time-
Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
...and consideration.
Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Bowles.
Welcome, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. Basically, I'll make this short. I don't have a whole lot to say, but I'm one of the volunteers down there at the senior center, and I've enjoyed going there for a long time, at least the last two years. And I hate to see it struggle like it has, but I do invite you to come down and maybe have a cup of coffee with us some morning, if you're able to, because that's what I do down there. I serve the coffee. Also, I found out today that we have over 400 active members in that senior center. And to me, if I was a politician, that's a lot of constituents that I would want to keep happy. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marsha Wiesma.
Welcome, Mrs. Wiesma.
Thank you. Well, this is a non-agenda public comment. It seems to me that the Browns, Jim and Virginia, are being purposely harassed by the code enforcement and the city. This has gone on for some time. It seems to be a retaliation, because the Browns come to the city council, and they do say their piece. Recently, the code enforcement complained about outside lights. They are not Christmas lights. Code enforcement has also complained about the container on the property. This issue was supposedly settled a year ago. The Browns had to pay a fine of $200, and shortly after talking with code enforcement and the city manager, they were asked to pay an additional $500. This is outrageous and very unfair. Such costs hurt our citizens, and the city does not care. The city does not even have any way to help when they create the financial hardships for a citizen. City Council, this issue was previously brought to your attention at the last council meeting. Nothing has changed, and code enforcement still threatens them with additional fines. What is your problem? Why do you attack, let individual citizens over and over while ignoring other code issues in the city that have been turned into code enforcement but not resolved? Some of these clearly involve public safety, others are visual problem, but all are code violations. I understand that code enforcement is also requiring part of the property to be cleaned up that was vandalized and burned. The Browns cleaned it up, but people have continued trashing it. The city has asked to settle an issue with the Browns about a parcel the city installed a sewer line on. This was previously brought up to the city council, but the city had not addressed it. I know that I may now be retaliated against by city, by the council, and also by code enforcement. They need to address my and other citizens' concerns about how code enforcement chooses to assault some citizens and ignore others. Thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiesma.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome, Mr. Wiesma.
Thank you, and congratulations on having a new police chief. However, I was kind of embarrassed for the city that I had to read that in the newspaper instead of the city making an announcement. I think that's something that you guys should have done for the citizens, not let it come out in the newspaper article. Right, our issue is Route 66. It's coming up for its big anniversary this coming year. I haven't heard that the city is going to do anything in regards to Route 66. It'd be nice if you did, and it'd be nice if you let the citizens know that you do plan on doing something for Route 66. I think that's very important for this city. Thirdly, considering code enforcement, it was brought up at the last meeting with presentation that, for some reason, you don't like avian pets. Don't know why, but it brings up the problem with, why'd the chicken cross the road? The answer is in Barstow, because I saw Mary Wilbon coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Eugene Buticci.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesma. Welcome, Mr. Buticci.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. I'm calling, this is in regards to some of the programs over at Desert Mana. Just want to give an update on the, just to kind of reiterate, due to grant money, and 2024, or actually, to date, Desert Mana has served about 120 with their emergency motel voucher program. And just want to reiterate, part of this program, or this program, is a reimbursable grant program, which means before the money is dispersed to Desert Mana, all documentation, including canceled checks, need to be submitted to the county. Any of the clients that Desert Mana receives through this program is entered into a county software called HMIS, and everything is compared to what was submitted for the reimbursement, to match up with what is in HMIS. Just a couple weeks ago, Desert Mana had worked with New Hope Village. They had a couple clients that would be going into the transitional housing program at New Hope Village, and they needed a place to stay for a week, so Desert Mana was able to accommodate them. It looks like, due to a situation with HAB3, which is where Desert Mana had originally received the emergency motel voucher money, there was another organization that was not able to provide the services that they were, said that they would. That money, nearly $388,000 is going back in, and it looks like the organizations that had received HAB3 money, it's going to be split between the remaining groups. So it looks pretty positive that Desert Mana will be getting more money for the emergency motel voucher program. Also, we're, it's just about ready to receive the funding for a job training program, which Desert Mana is able to do. We've already completed one program in which three people were, received logistics training, and it looks like that grant is being reapproved. Paperwork's all been submitted verbally, it's been approved on. And, yeah, just to kind of reiterate, as far as with Desert Mana, I think we do, Desert Mana does work with other nonprofits in the area, primarily New Life Fellowship, New Hope Village, as well to a more limited degree with Desert Sanctuary, and when needed, also with Barstow Church of God and Christ with their, with their food distribution program. We continue to work on the edible food recovery. As a matter of fact, I'm about to send a report into Taylor outlining how much food, edible food recovery Desert Mana was able to do in 2024. And we average about eight to 10 tons of food a month that has been diverted from the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buticci.
Our next speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
Jesse Flores, E.T. Snell clown community activist.
Welcome, Mr. Snell.
W, thank you, www.ETSnail.com. Jesse Flores was Bill Posthumous Gardener, is how he came to the claim of fame when I was in Atlanta. Chief Brown, I kind of feel some mixed feelings. I was reading the SBC, standing for San Bernardino County Sentinel, and he had an article in there talking about you, and talking about the Chihuahua Espinosa. But I have a letter here, an email that you wrote, Mr. Brown. "Mr. Brown, this is Chris Kelly. I was made aware of your comments. You know, they are incorrect, da-da-da-da-da-da, I turned down. I turned 50 and had retirement age. My girlfriend works for Barstow. Please, I've worked for the best boss. I have worked for, and he is my best friend," referring to Chief Espinosa. "He has the most integrity, and I hate," so we all know that wasn't true. "I hate to see how he is being treated after 26 years." And if that is the email, which we know it is, that you sent, Mr. Brown, I'd like you to be able to explain your relationship when you have a time later on, because I'm willing to give you a chance. You know, I think the city manager put a bullseye on your back by not telling anybody who the people were pointing, and how many people we chose to interview. I mean, you came here for a week, and then they gave you two weeks off. To me, that seemed like the bribe or the payoff of Rochelle. And then trying to get a hold of you, you're never there. Of course, you live two hours away. It's a two-hour drive there, two-hour back. So we just don't get, we just don't get a full schedule from you. Getting back to the chief, the way they appointed you, I thought was horrible. Didn't you used to be city manager in Banning? And then you brought that police chief out there from Banning, brought him back over here. I mean, it just, there's so much neptunism. And if you read SBC, standing for San Bernardino County Sentinel, starting with an S, it lays out a lot of things that's, that's wrong with the city. So, but anyway, I would like to meet with you later, and I'd like to talk with you, and talk some of the things over. And I hope that there's any more killings of unarmed individuals in Barstow that will see some prosecution by the police department, you know, because it just seemed like they got a hunting permit. I appreciate your time. And I think this council's got some stories to tell us, like the truth about-
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
-what went on with the appointment of the chief.
Our next speaker is Ms. Virginia Brown.
Welcome, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City. I'm a little surprised tonight. My name keeps getting brought up, and I don't know why, but, okay. I am a big girl, and you guys know I will talk when I need to say something. Tonight, I'm coming for several reasons. First of all, I want to say thank you to the county, who I know also came through the city, just somebody here I contacted, and they contacted, they were on the police department, and I called the other night, about 10 huge dogs running through our neighborhood with some homeless people. And the people were yelling at my grandkids because the dogs were barking, and my grandkids, as they were running away from the fence, dropped their puppy. The puppy's about this big. The puppy's not afraid, so the puppy ran to the fence and was gonna, he was gonna eat all 10 of those dogs. And the lady homeless started cussing at my grandkids and telling them she was going to kill their puppy. "I'll put my dogs in your yard right now and kill them." This woman had 10 dogs. I've got them on video. Anybody wants to come to my house, and look, I have 360-degree view of these cameras. 10 of these huge dogs. I called the police. They sent out four officers. The officers left, came down onto the drive. I watched them go right past my house. They never stopped and asked me any questions or talked to me. And then they left the drive. One officer waited till after the sun went down to come back off the drive. He'd been on the drive about an hour and a half, and he has his spotlight on, but he's putting it in my yard. And I'm like, what is he doing? I told the police, when I called, that if you come into my yard and you look, you will see the homeless encampment where the 10 dogs are at. Not one of them stopped in my yard. Not one of them asked me anything. They just drove right past my house. And then about 20 minutes later, three of them drove right off. And about an hour and a half later, like I said, here comes the last one with his spotlight on me in my yard. Now, by now, it's pitch black, I can't see. But I want to thank the county, because the next day, the county showed up and removed the entire encampment. Three big orange dump loads, full of stuff that I thought, okay, at least they didn't get the dogs. The dogs are still running the neighborhood, by the way, running in and out of my yard, coming under my fence, coming after my grandkids. But, you know, hey, what the heck. At least we got rid of that. But today, I go to get up to take my grandson to his boxing class, and guess what? They're back, putting up more tents, putting, I don't know who in this city thinks that giving them food and clothing and shelter and all this stuff is for their benefit, because the minute we do it, they come right back to where we just took them out of, and then we're still dealing with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
And our last speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, Jim Brown, Barstow. Yes, code enforcement, Mary, the $500 that she put on us, and we paid the 200. And I did come to you, Mayor, and showed you the evidence. And to this day, I have not received a call, anything about the, if you're going to take the $500 off. And, and I'm glad the people came up here and spoke about what y'all doing to us. It's, you know, it is, it's wrong what you're doing to us. Just because we come here and speak at this podium, don't give y'all a damn right to come and attack us. That's, that need to stop. That need to stop. You're putting, sending police, code enforcement after all of us. And Mary, I'm gonna tell you, she need to be fired. She need to be fired for what she lied. And the city manager, I don't know what you're doing, but you, we have brought this here, and you have not talked to mayor, you have not done anything. You turned out to be a disappointment, in my eyes. I don't know about other people, but in my eyes, you turned out to be a disappointment. And I did talk to the mayor, and I said, I asked the mayor, why didn't, why are you not letting her talk? I said, "This is on him." This is what I told him. "This is on him, because he keeping you feathered. You can't fly. He got you tethered, and you can't talk to the people." And that's why, at the last city council meeting, a senior citizen came up here and said, "You lied." So I'm gonna ask you, Mayor, you need to let her do her job, because she getting beat up, and she not gonna last. You need to talk to, you need to talk to Willie Hopkins about that one, because he know what happened. So I'm telling you, you need to speak up. You and this council need to get in that back room and say, "Hey, let me do my job. Let me do my job," because you are not like your, your article in the paper, which you did all these things. I was impressed, but you come in here, you're not doing nothing. What they done in that back room is gave you some crazy juice. Crazy juice, so you couldn't talk, and so all of them crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We have no more comments.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our public hearing. Agenda item number three, first reading and introduction of an ordinance adding Chapter 9.75 and amending Section 19.14.030, 19.16.020, and 19.16.030 of the Bar- of the Barstow Municipal Code regarding smoke shops and tobacco stores. This is continued from June 17th of 2025. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to invite City Attorney Summers, along with some assistance from the Community Development Department, to give this report.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So what we have before you is the first reading introduction, as proposed, of the Smoke Shops and Tobacco Store Ordinance. The overall goal of this ordinance, which has been refined through several rounds of public review, planning commission, and rules and policy, and previously at this council, is to limit the proliferation of smoke shops and tobacco stores and the associated negative impacts that stem from those, including an increase in underage tobacco sales, underage tobacco usage, and the greater opportunity for illegal drug paraphernalia marketed as tobacco paraphernalia to be put on the streets and trying to reduce those impacts. The ordinance broad strokes creates a set of rules that require conditional use permits for tobacco stores, eliminating them as a permitted use in the commercial district and in the diverse use district and the human services districts, and instead allowing them to be in the commercial district by conditional use permit. So the requirement is that you get a conditional use permit, not a permitted permit, for a smoke shop. And then setting a series of rules about where they can be located, in particular, that they have to be 1,000 feet from schools, 1,000 feet from places like parks, where children will gather, and 1,000 feet from each other. So a new set of rules regarding where smoke shops can operate, and then some operations rules for how they operate, paired with two exceptions. One exception is the legacy businesses exception. It will allow the 13 existing smoke shops that have operated in the city for some number of years to continue to exist without preventing them from being where they are now and allowing those businesses to be sold from the current owner to a future owner as long as they don't have a gap of service for more than six months. And then second exception is for ancillary sales. If you have a gas station, a grocery store, a convenience store, where a small proportion of their sales is tobacco, they would not be subject to regulation as a smoke shop, because they're primarily a gas station or they're primarily a convenience store. And on that front, staff does have one recommended adjustment to the ordinance, which was on the dais, and I'll walk through it. It's in the definition section. We're suggesting that the ancillary sale definition be adjusted to delete the last sentence, which blocked e-cigarettes as an ancillary sale, because we have several gas stations that sell both traditional paper cigarettes and e-cigarettes as part, as an ancillary use, the primary sale being gasoline and other automotive fuels. So eliminate that last sentence. And then second, and the sentence before that, this is in Section 974020, allow for a smaller grocery convenience store, retail kiosk, that's 300 square feet or less, ancillary sales is no more than 50, rather than five square feet of tobacco. And this is, if you think about a small gas station, it'll have the little booth where you go in and you either pay cash for gas. The tobacco has to be behind the counter, because you can't have tobacco products where minors can reach them. They have to be behind the counter. But that counter space typically above where the clerk sits is probably more than five square feet. If they have above a row of tobacco products, and then behind the shelving has typically more cigarettes or other tobacco products, that's more than five square feet, but it's an existing gas station. So the intent wasn't, as we understood it, to outlaw what exists now. It's to regulate a smoke shop as opposed to a gas station. So hence, the staff's recommendation is to increase that five square feet to 50 square feet, but still tightening it down. With that, I'll note that this, as I noted, went through planning commission, rules and policy in the council previously. We also, those adjustments that I've described take care of the concerns that were raised by the, let me get the name of them right, the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance, CFCA, an alliance of gas station owners and operators, and convenience store owners and operators, that raised some concerns previously. We believe that those two edits take care of it, because gas stations that sell e-cigarettes and vaping products would be allowed to continue to be gas stations with those as an ancillary product line. And then the five square feet, up to 50, should take care of their concerns. We have already implemented, per council's prior direction, the legacy sales component, allowing the legacy stores that already exist to continue to operate. That takes care of the prior concern the council had raised there about our existing businesses that haven't generally created problems, to continue to exist. The key there, though, is, of course, they have to continue to operate lawfully. If any smoke shop, if any stripe is selling to minors, and provably so, then that's a crime. The PD will take care of it, but also they'll be subject to revocation of their permits, if we have that situation. So there's the tool, the allowance for legacy businesses to continue, but then the enforcement tool exists to take care of it if they're selling to minors when they're not supposed to be. So with that, we're available for any questions. And I'll kick it as well to the Community Development Director for any comments.
Okay, before I go to council, to council for questions, I'm gonna back up the staff's recommended action item, that the city council adopt ordinance number 1032-2025, limiting the proliferation of smoke shops and tobacco stores with the city of Barstow and amending Barstow Municipal Code to add a new chapter, 9.74, and update sections 19.14.030, 19.16.020, and 19.16.030 of zoning ordinance of the city of Barstow. Questions from council? Councilmember Hernandez.
I saw that exception for the gas stations. But the bottom line is, they are selling e-cigarettes, correct? And if they sell it to minors, that is illegal.
Correct. If a gas station sells e-cigarettes or vapes to minors, that's illegal under existing state law and this code.
And let's say new gas stations come in. They're not considered smoke shops. They will have the same conditions as what you are modifying this agreement to?
Correct. A new gas station that comes in would be able to sell tobacco products under the same ancillary use, but they have to meet the same conditions.
And that's the 50 square feet, correct?
Right. The 50 square feet, if it's 300 square feet or smaller, which is typically your gas station kiosks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hernandez. See no more requests to speak from council. I will open this public hearing at 7:42 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this public hearing item?
We do. Mr. Eugene Butechy.
Welcome, Mr. Butechy.
Thank you very much, council. I just want to reiterate, as far as with the process, from where it started until where it ended, personally, I think it's textbook, because to tell the truth, at the beginning, it was a hot mess. And finally focusing everything to where it was, the true concern was, I believe, towards the smoke shops, I like the way the process had gone. And now, I'm just not too sure on the square footage for the incident, what, the 50 square feet. What I was just, and I didn't think of this until today, 50 square feet would work as far as for a majority of the convenience stores and gas stations within Barstow. But there's, I'm thinking of some locations in Barstow, particularly truck stops, where they may have more, because, I mean, keep in mind, they have 20-plus gas pumps there in addition to all the truckers there. So in essence, it's a larger facility. So I'm not sure if there's any type of a sliding scale. I mean, if not, no big deal. But I'm just throwing that idea out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butechy.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. All right, my only question is this. There's kids that have had cannabis candy in town, somebody selling it. What's going on with it? Is there anybody being held accountable for selling this to minors? And our minors are landing up, getting high. And they're underage people, so how are they getting the substance? How are they able to get the candy that's given this? I know other students are giving it to them in the grammar schools. But somebody's gotta be selling it. And I don't know what you're doing to stop that. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I have no more comments on this item.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed to this item? Seeing no one approaching? Yes, please state your name.
Yes, my name is Melissa, and I have, I have four children. And the oldest is 17. She just turned 17. And depending on the parenting and the household you grow up in, you can and cannot get away with buying those illegal products that they're selling to children. And like they said, I don't know what anybody's doing about it to catch the problem, but that problem does need to be solved, because what if they put something in it and kids die from it? And that's a very, that's a serious concern, too. And another thing is, maybe some people don't care, because those are not their kids. Or it's just like, okay, let them do whatever they want, because that's not their children or their grandchildren. But put yourself in somebody's shoes that actually does care. And the thing is, that's all over the states and everything else. But I come from Orange County, and you usually don't see that too much with certain kids having those products. And I'm surprised that a lot of kids do have their hands on it out here, too. Maybe the police enforcement, maybe they need to enforce things more on, maybe the parents will try to find out where the kids are getting it from. I think that would, I think that would really help out. Or what if, for example, what if there's something on the floor and a child eats it? And it has more than just marijuana in it? And what if that kid just dies from it or something? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Seeing no one else approaching, I'll close this public hearing at 7:47 PM. Bring it back to council for any questions of staff. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief Kirby, can you kind of address what we do? You know, what the protocol is, you know, on checking and monitoring, you know, the businesses, on how we, you know, look at them, you know, potentially selling to two minors?
Sorry, new guy. Yes, ma'am. With the marijuana shops, we do regular inspections. We go in there, we monitor the way they're conducting business. And if, this is news to me.
Yeah, just a minute, because the agenda item, well, you're misled, but it's on the tobacco shops. And I know the public brought up cannabis, but the agenda item is not on cannabis, and I would prefer not to answer that question. Maybe later, comments by staff. Okay.
And it may be the case that similar approaches enforcement regarding the cannabis facilities are also the tobacco shops, right, Chief? In that we'll monitor for sales, and if we receive reports of unlawful sales to minors at a gas station or smoke shop, your office takes care of that?
Absolutely.
But it's a fair question, and yeah, comments, we should address that.
Yeah, thank you. I was just, you know, asking, you know, because I know that there's protocol. I know that, you know, that the police department does look at businesses, and they do monitor and spot check. And we're assuming, we're only assuming that they're selling, but there is also other, and this is a question. We're assuming that it's being sold to the minors, but is it fair to say that the parents are buying it for them? Or their older brother or sister is buying it for them? That we can't, there's no really, we can't say for sure how they're getting it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, unfortunately, unlawful drugs being diverted, and tobacco being diverted to minors is such a multifaceted problem. We can't stop every source, but we can certainly continue a robust enforcement program as to minors acquiring tobacco through sales. If they're getting it from their adults in their lives who are making poor choices, that, those adults have to step up as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Councilmember Williams, questions of staff?
The ordinance was pretty messed up until the Mayor Pro Tem brought it back to the council. What are some of the positive things you saw in the new ordinance that was brought forward to you guys? The 50 feet, you know, we talked about the distance between the school. All those things were discussed that were brought up in that rules and policy that Mayor Pro Tem was bringing to, back to our community. But we changed a lot in there, and we made a lot of changes for the better of the community, correct?
Correct. So the easiest way to put it is, is that the initial ordinance had direction to go a certain way. And then during the rules and policy procedure, you know, or the way we went through it, a lot of changes were suggested. And then, of course, the public came and voiced their concern, and the city, you know, got direction from council that this is, you know, the direction we wanted to go. And we made edits to that document to have the final ordinance, which you have before you tonight.
Did any smoke shops were in disagreement with the changes we made?
Not the document that you have before you. But at the beginning, yes, there was a lot of concern with the document.
So we listened to the owners? We listened to the residents? We brought it back to rules and policy, and Mayor Pro Tem, with the guidance of staff, made some changes that everybody agreed to, correct?
Correct. That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you. So you know other council members in the queue for questions? I will entertain a motion. And please note the motions to include the changes to 9.74.020, as stated by the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve and to include the amending sections of 19.14.030 and .020 and .030 of the Barstow Municipal Code.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rose, a second by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion? I see no one requesting discussion. I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public hearing. Lean protest hearing for delinquent trash and sewer accounts. The staff recommendation to city council, conduct the protest hearing. Subject to testimony received, adopt resolution number 5231-2025 and waive further reading. Number two, where necessary and relevant, direct staff to resolve any conflicts with protest owners before the final lean and/or property tax assessment list is filed with San Bernardino County. Additionally, authorize staff to remove any properties from the lean and assessment listing should delinquent fees be paid prior to the filing of the final lean list with San Bernardino County. City Manager, Ms. Harris.
Hi, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to turn this over to Finance Director Harris to provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I would like to reiterate that this item impacts owners only. This has no impact on our tenants. Tonight, we have provided a form for those owners to complete in the lobby before council meeting tonight. This is for consideration of a payment arrangement for the delinquent amounts that are currently due. What this does is, it allows for the past due amounts to be paid concurrently with the current amounts, so that we can catch up those delinquent accounts. Now, what this does not do is exclude these items from the lean list. So, as a result of the delinquent fees, the property will still go to lean. However, the payment arrangement, if approved, will prevent those that are approved from being assessed. So that essentially means that the amounts past due will not be on the property tax roll. So, what we will do, so as of this afternoon, we've done a final count. There are 671 files that are prepared for tax assess or the lean process at this time, at $697,137.86. With, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I am available.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Before I go to questions from council, I want to let the council know that the city clerk has your abstentions, and the city clerk will read off your abstentions, so there's no need to call those out yourself. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams.
I gotta correct that number again. What was that total again? That's, uh, outstanding?
We have six hundred and seventy-one lien files for six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Who's, who's paying that, that difference if that bill's not getting paid?
So this, uh, this amount is a result of the billing that happens, uh, monthly or bi-monthly, depending on the type of, of service that's provided. The city of Barstow pays this arrangement with BRTech directly based on services rendered. So if this bill goes unpaid, that is basically fronted by the city of Barstow.
Or, or the taxpayers, correct?
Correct.
So the taxpayers is paying that, that unpaid bill? And one more time, what was the total of people that, that we're looking at?
There's six hundred and seventy-one files, um, currently that are still delinquent today.
How do we get to six hundred and seventy-one files? I get it, there's a process and we have to do all the things we're doing, but six seventy-one seems like, it is a terrible, terrible number.
The process, so our lien process starts several months in advance. We actually go through all of the amount, uh, all of the bills that are sent out and we filter through any of those that have a past due amount. So we do our normal billing like, like usual. We send things in the mail, we send them via email, depending on how the owner has signed up for, for billing. And once we get to this point in time in the year, we filter through those that are, have a past due amount. We send out letters three times over the course of four months to, um, make those, those owners aware of the situation. Um, and then when we get to this point, we, um, we filter through any of those have made payments, um, up to this point and this is where we're left.
What is some of the oldest out of the six hundreds? Do you have that, do you have that number by any chance with, how far this goes out? Five months, six months, a year? How long can it go?
It's, this is actually done every year. So the oldest billing that could be in this file, it could be a year. If they didn't pay in prior years, that's on a different lien assessment.
This could be worse than this.
Some of these, um, some of these files are multiple, um, how should I say it? They've been leaned multiple times.
You know, if you don't pay, you pay your car payment, after a couple of months, they come get your car, right?
Correct.
They don't ask any questions. We, we are working with the public to try to get them to pay the bill and you're telling me some could be a year or even longer outdated?
That is correct.
Boy, we are the, just the kindest, nicest city around, aren't we?
I believe so, yes.
I, I don't, I don't think it's fair for taxpayers to be paying for the difference in this.
Well, in, in addition to these past due amounts, we all, we also offer, um, extensions to those who qualify for hardships. And that is also, um, at the discretion of, uh, the city, but it is a, um, a bill that is paid by the city of Barstow, um, depending on eligibility. So that also adds to the amount that's due, um, to our BRTech service agreement.
How many of these six seventy-one are in some kind of a payment status?
Currently, well, currently I believe we have six individuals who have applied, have complied with a payment arrangement.
Six?
Six.
Out of six seventy-one?
Those, that's what I have in front of me right now.
I gotta tell you, I've never seen this or heard this. It shocked me tonight. I, I, I cannot believe, what's the, what's the policy? You know what? You might want to bring that to rules and policy, you have to change some things around here. I, I, I cannot believe that number I'm hearing, what, what that is doing to our taxpayers and what they're losing, uh, what we're doing. So again, one more time, I just want to make this very clear, six, six seventy-one and we're talking about six hundred and seventy-one, almost six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Six hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety-seven thousand.
Almost seven hundred thousand.
Wow. Wow. I think we need a group hug or something, I'll tell you. I, I don't know how we do our jobs up here, really don't. I, I, this is ridiculous. We're, we're penny pinching the budget to do what we gotta do, the taxpayers are paying for this. Unbelievable.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So last year, I'm not sure if you were with us, Ms. Harris, when this council had asked that we would get this list six months, not a year, six months down the road so that we could try to collect sooner than a year's time. And do you remember that?
I do recall that and actually that has been a personal goal of mine to, um, actually do this process multiple times in the year, not just the one time. However, this process is extremely lengthy and it's very manual and we do not have the appropriate staff to be able to tackle this more than once a year. But it is a goal of mine to get to that point where we can do this at least twice a year, if not more.
So hopefully, um, Ms. Clayton, that we can get, um, some support so that, do you agree that if we even had one additional office, somebody helping, that we, we would save money?
So I, I think that we could, however, right now with the system functionality, it is a very manual process. So yes, with, with one person, I don't know that the cost benefit would, would be there to, um, to have the manual process, but we'll, now, we'll work to analyze that, to see if that, that will be a benefit to, to add one more person that could, um, process this. Right now, the system conversion is underway, so we're also coming up with some issues on our billing system, but that we're working through those to where, once we have the system conversion in place, it will be a less manual process. So we're looking to that in the next year, absolutely.
Have you looked at other cities that are doing this, that have some type of system in place? What are they doing better? Have you looked into that? What are they doing right that we're not doing?
We're automating right now. So we had a partial implementation of our billing system, which is underway to convert to a whole new system. So once we get the system in place, it's going to be a much more automated process and we'll have, we'll have that functionality, um, better suited to go forward with the twice-a-year analysis. Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, that, um, having had the discussion with, um, our solid waste consultants, several of the contract cities actually outsource this process, so they don't have internal staff that go through the manual process. BRTech has, uh, staffing that handle this three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year, um, so it's not on the burden of the city.
Ms. Harris, were you, were you here or, this was before your time, but have you heard that we used to outsource?
I did, yes.
And it worked? And when we took it on as a city, um, this is what we're looking at. So we might even consider outsourcing, um, going back to what, where it was, because I know that as a resident, um, and this is a question, as a resident, I believe, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were happier when we were outsourcing because there's been many complaints, calls to me. Do you have, um, any knowledge of a lot of complaints on the internal billing?
Um, I don't have the knowledge of the complaints. I am familiar with the fact that it was outsourced prior to my tenure here, um, and there was some internal decision to bring it in-house. But with the amount of staff that we have, it has been a constant struggle to keep up with the, the demand.
I can't even imagine. I do have another question. You said six hundred and seventy-one files. Is the, um, is there any, um, one landlord, and I can just give you an example, one landlord has multiple structures like complexes, A and B. Six hundred and seventy-one, is that files like one landlord that has A and B or does it include A as one and B as another?
This is listed by parcel number. So if one landlord has multiple parcels, then they could be on here multiple times.
But does, is that included in six seventy-one or could, is the, is it higher?
No, no, it's included with the six seventy-one.
Okay. The letters, you talked about letters being sent out three times to the landlords.
Correct.
Do we have a up-to-date landlord list? Are they going to the residents as well?
So-
So that's two questions, I apologize.
Um, well, no, part of our process, when we go through this, when we originally go through the lien process, is that we compare our files internally, all of the accounts that we bill, to the county system so that we can actually fix any situation where a property may have sold and there's a different owner's name or there's a different address if we have an, an out-of-state or out-of-city owner. So we do the best we can to find, um, current addresses for, for the owners.
So I guess my question would be if we don't have a current list for the owners, because we have a lot of owners that live out of state.
Correct.
We all know this, correct? So if we sent the letter to the resident, to the actual tenant, they're paying somebody. Is there, have we sent it to the tenant to say, hey, can, can you please let your landlord know that this is due?
I believe that, um, we use owner on file. If the, if we're given permission to send the billing to the tenant, then yes, we will. However, each arrangement is, is different, but we usually will inform the owner. So wherever the owner's address is listed, um, which generally speaking, the owner is using the, the city's address and then at some point in time in the future, they move to a different place. So, um, most of our accounts, we start with the current, uh, the city address.
Is it possible to get red trash cans on these that owe, that, that owe us so that it says, I owe taxes? Uh, I have a lien on this property, uh, just a big red thumb to, to let everybody know that these properties are, um, are costing the taxpayers money? Is that possible?
There's some, some analysis that has to go in there, but there are other items that, like Mr. Williams suggested, um, if we come to rules and policy, there are some other tactics that we may be able to use to get a better result from this process and I would like to present that at a later time.
And my, my final question for right now is, um, if somebody owes, I, I'll have two questions. If somebody owes money, I mean, we're talking one that owes over thirteen thousand, fifty-four hundred, thirteen thousand, one person. It's just ludicrous. My question would be on the tax refunds. If you get a tax refund, can we contact the IRS to take this out of their tax refund? Probably not.
I'll jump in on that one. So the IRS won't let us lien the tax refunds. Uh, we've looked into it, but it's just not something the federal government will let us do. It would be easy, right? But that's where the lien process comes in place and that's why the notices don't go to the tenants. The notices go to the property owner because the property can't flee. The property lives here. So we go to lien, the county puts it on the property tax bill, they don't pay their bill or they pay it. If they pay it, we get our, it comes back through us through the tax system. They don't pay it, then in five years, the county sells the property out from underneath them and then we get paid then. I realize though, there's that timeline. We don't control that five-year clock. That's the county clock, but it always gets paid in the end because they either pay the property tax bill or the taxes, the property is sold. But it's certain, that, all that said, we can take a look at additional collection tools.
And my-
And have that discussion for additional ways.
My final question is, can we stop putting trash cans in their yard? I mean, I know that could create something-
Yeah, I'd say past councils have assessed that. We can take that, a look at that again, but past councils have assessed it on both trash and sewer and made the decision that it was better to continue providing the service, even if we're having to front the cost because of the public health problems that come from people disposing of their trash and their human waste another way.
And Matthew, one last question. Uh, what would it take for us to go back to outsourcing?
You know, I'm not sure off the top of my head what it would take to look at that, but I think it's something we can take a look at, at the staff level.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, and along some of the same questions that Mayor Pro Tem brought up, uh, the, the main one I was bringing up is that one with the thirteen thousand. Do we have any kind of mechanism or some type of system to identify after, uh, three months, uh, based on the amount that these individuals are getting to, that we aggressively go after these individuals?
Um, we at one point had started an early assessment. So for some of these commercial properties, their, their amount, it, it, it goes up pretty fast. And so we, one, I had two, uh, staff members that were actually able to work on this file. We had started, um, to take a look at those accounts that were large dollar accounts so that maybe we can figure out how to notify them a little bit sooner. We've had kind of a, an extreme amount of turnover in the department. So as soon as we get someone trained on this process, they're out the door, we have one person that's actually working on this entire system by themselves and we just don't have the, the time or the resource to spare them to actually do the additional research. But ideally, what we want to do is be able to look at these at least twice a year, um, and especially for those commercial, um, tenants, we want to make sure that we have some type of way to notify them, even if we have to send out code enforcement or someone to, to knock on the door essentially. Because we don't want, we don't want our residents and our, our commercial properties to get this far behind. It's very difficult to get caught up. So again, that's, that's one of those things that I would like to improve in this process, as well as maybe try to identify some other tactics of collection so that we just don't get this far.
Yes, and I, and I agree. And I, I was looking at that particular tenant because it's a business, but there's another one that is nine thousand dollars. That is in the same boat. So, uh, finding a, a system or a mechanism to identify those individuals, and if we can't identify them early on, uh, what other means are we doing to try aggressively to identify the owner, uh, upfront?
We actually have a system, um, that's, uh, batched in with the county. So whenever a property sells and they record, uh, a deed or a title, um, we're able to see that information through the system that we use. It's coincidentally called Noble. And so we use this system.
It's system.
Yeah. We use this system through the process so that we can get more up-to-date information than what we've been given from the landlord or the tenant. So the, the object of the game is to get ahead of this by doing this more times a year. Of course, that means that this manual process has to be done, um, more times during the year. There's really no automatic way that has been created that I'm aware of, yet there is always going to be this portion that's manual. The key is to get the number of files down so it doesn't take quite so long to get through the process.
Now, are, are we prioritizing based on the, the amount that's owed or are we trying to get the, those that are at the lower end with the smaller amounts? Because I see a huge amount of small amount.
We're going for all of them. Yeah, we, we go for all of them. There's, there's no one or other that stands out above the all. We try to get them all as, as much as we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Noble. Councilmember Hernandez?
No one has asked, how much do we get back from the liens?
Um, like Mr. Summers stated, we eventually will get the entire amount.
What do we get? Let's say what we get last year from our liens?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, good. Is I, yeah.
But essentially, we will, so if the property like changes hands or gets a new owner, that amount, as long as that lien is, is on, on the title, we will receive these funds. It usually will take a process, like a, a, a cycle for property tax before we get paid. So our, our property tax, um, receipts are, do include some of these liens when we do receive them.
And, and that's the question I have. Yes, it's a huge amount.
Correct.
But I, the fact that we place liens, even on the lowest. We get, I know that we get that because I had comments from, from residents that have done that, you know? Okay, I'll just pay it with my taxes. That's not what we would like, but I mean, there are people that approach it that way because they're embarrassed to come or request a payment plan, unfortunately. That's why I would like to know is how much we actually, because, because we do this yearly, how much do we actually get back in comparison to what is owed? Because it isn't just the five-year lien. We, you know, there's a good portion that-
We do.
-property taxes brings, brings in.
Yes, anyone who has an impounded account, so if they still have a mortgage, um, these amounts will eventually be included with their mortgage.
And increase their mortgage.
Yes, exactly. And these amounts actually come with several fees. The minimum fee is at least seventy-five dollars administratively and then there's- The minimum fee is at least seventy-five dollars administratively, and then there's a percentage fee that's added to the amount. So if you're looking, if individuals are thinking that this is the way to go, it's a very costly way to go because the mortgage will also assess a fee to include this amount as well, so.
If I could add two points to that. One, so anybody who thinks that they're going to save money or by waiting to lien is dead wrong. It's a twenty-eight percent combined late fee and penalty added on top of whatever amount is owed, plus the seventy-five dollar administration fee, plus whatever fee your mortgage, if you have it through impound, will charge. There's, in this case, there's almost two hundred thousand dollars in those fees and penalties as part of that, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand in lien amount. So folks would save money if they pay the bill every month, or every, every two months. And then second, the only real risk we would see of a lien not being paid in the end is if the property sold at auction for less than lien value, because most of these liens are relatively low amounts relative to property value. We would expect that they would be paid, although there is that timetable that it takes the county a while. So in the end, we get almost all of it back, it's just a time trigger. But staff can certainly look up as we go the more precise figures each year. Thank you.
Right, and that, what I want to clarify, that we get, we're going to get that money back. It's not, it's just out there. That was my question. And we did, we did have it outsourced, and I'd like to know if we were paying for that outsource. It wasn't when BRTech was doing it. What was the cost to us?
There would be some administrative charge for that, but yeah.
So that's, that's my question. I would like that answered too, as opposed to us having it in-house, because there was a rationale why we did it, so I would like to know. So we all know, you know, whether it's cost-effective or not.
Definitely.
And those that have their property paid for and still don't pay the tax, there is those, a lot of this, as I was looking too, is charges. It's not just the trash and sewers, the charging, that we, correct, as a city are charging them?
Correct, yes.
Right. So in that, when we look at the actual, is the city losing, or is it the residents that are choosing not to pay, or are not capable of paying, whatever the rationale about it, those extra costs?
Yeah, I mean, on that note, there's two hundred, two hundred thousand in-
Okay, so how much is our fees, you know, of the six ninety-seven, and all, so we have it, you know, clarified?
Yeah, it's a-
It's not just the six ninety-seven. Six ninety-seven because you don't pay, and these are the costs. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. So in summary numbers, if folks had just paid the bill upfront, when it was due, it'd be about five hundred and five thousand. But because of the failure to do so, there's six hundred and ninety-seven thousand that'll be leaned. So that extra two hundred thousand is revenue that pays for all the time spent running this process and goes back into the sewer system, but is also revenue that the residents didn't need to spend and property owners didn't need to spend if they paid their bill on time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Williams.
Did you say we're doing this manually?
Correct.
Well, there's your problem right there. Well, that's, there goes six hundred and seven thousand dollars we can't pay our light So if we're doing this manually, there's no way we can stay on top of the faults on the bills then. It's just skipping right past us.
Yes, there-
So second thing, the second thing I'm going to ask you is, when we're saying thirteen thousand, actually with penalties in all, it's sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars with the penalties and everything else in there. Are we, are we looking at a system to put in place to catch this? I think that answer is no.
I'll, yeah, I'll ask Sydney. Sorry, Ms. Harris, too. Look at that. I don't know that we have done-
So we, everything is manual at this point. The only system that we would be able to put into place is to actually train an individual to be able to assess these sooner than just this assessment point in time. If we can get a body to stay in the chair, we could actually have these done even bi-monthly, quarterly, much sooner than just once a year. But there, as I understand it, there is no automated system that is capable of doing what is, what needs to be done to actually create this lien file.
Okay, so, so my next question is going to be is, was, was the BRTech before, before we, before we were doing it, BRTech is doing it, do they have an automated system? They did it by hand?
They have a person. They have a staff of several individuals that are assigned to different cities to actually provide the service.
Okay.
I do want to add that I worked for a utility that had an automated process, so I would like us to research that before we say that, because there are some utility systems that we can look at. I just want to do some research.
So the next question is, the next question is, when BRTech was doing the billing, who paid the penalty at that time? Who was paying the, it wasn't the taxpayers, was it? It was BRTech itself?
So if the, if the, if the owner was late with their bill, then the penalty would be assessed to the bill itself, same, same that we do here.
So we're still paying for it no matter if it's outsourcing or not?
We still pay the same amount, right? Correct.
So let me ask this question. Why do we, maybe someone that's been around long enough, like maybe Chris over there, the great, the great one, someone explain to me why we took outsourcing away from BRTech? I knew that was going to be a good one.
I think that conversation needs to be offline.
I thought we were going to say that. I'm going to tell you right now, the, if we can't find an automated system, this is not a business we need to be involved with, and I, I hope that you're going to be out there looking for an automated system that can solve this problem, because without an automated system, we're in trouble, correct?
Yes, I do want to, we'll work to look at the outsourcing versus an automated system and what options. We will do some more research.
Last question. It's five years. Am I correct that you have to wait until you can go take someone's property or?
And that would be at the county level.
Okay, so if, if-
And if I could jump in, so the county will automatically sell it at five years if they haven't paid the property tax bill. We can foreclose the lien faster, although there's transaction costs in foreclosing a lien, so it wouldn't make any sense to do it for a thousand dollars. It might make sense if these liens are bigger.
So if five years, if they pay a year of fees upfront, then they get another additional year on top of that to continue? Because if that's the case, that's just what they're going to do. They're just going to pay a year and then keep rolling it on.
Yeah, I mean, if they keep it, if you don't pay for the tax bill for five years of zero payments-
You're good.
But if you, then the county will sell it for you, or sell it from underneath you. If you cut that clock and, you know, you could wait four years and then make a payment, and then it restarts the clock.
Oh, my God.
And that's, but that's where, if we have any of those that are in, and I don't know off the top of my head if we have any in that situation, if that happens, then we can still foreclose the lien, and once it's worth it to do it-
We don't, we don't know because it's all manually, right? We have no idea what's happening.
Well, we know how much, we know what's been leaned, and we know what's been paid. So we can track that in terms of if there's-
Let me shut up. I've had enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. I know we, I'm listening to my fellow councilmen, we're talking manually, we're talking outsourcing and stuff, but the question is, why we have six hundred and fifty-some people on this list? That's the question. What is, what is happening that allows six hundred and fifty-some people to be on this list?
Right.
Some of these are small amounts, and I got it, and there's some huge amount, but why do we have that many people? That's the question.
That is a good question, and I do not have a great answer for you, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, even if we, if we did it manually, even if we did it by a system, we would still have people on there. So why do we have six hundred plus on there? Even if we did it automatically, we, automatic, we would have had six hundred some people. If we did it by hand, we had six hundred. The question is, why do we have six hundred some people on the list? That's the question.
Thank you, Councilman Noble. Mayor Protem Rose.
I can't answer that question, but I just wanted to add that this isn't unique to our city, and I can bring some data, we can bring some data to provide more information to council. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Harris, how many staff members do you have in your office?
Well, currently, I have one U B accounting technician, and then I have our brand-new finance, Assistant Finance Director, who's been here for less than a month, and then, okay, so let me off the top of my head. I believe I have seven, yeah.
And they all have their personal job duties?
Correct.
Things that they do every day that's non-
It's, yes.
-billing for the trash and sewer, correct?
Not everyone is involved in this process, no.
And as an expert in finances, can you fairly say, because I'm thinking about it, if we hired somebody, we would have to pay them their salary and their benefits, and then they would get raises when, when raises occur, correct? It might be cheaper, probably cheaper, to outsource.
Outsource, correct. We would have to do that analysis, yeah.
And you did say that three, let me see, what did you say? Four, three letters, three letters are sent out in a four-month span?
Correct.
But we're looking at people that are, are they sent out, what, quarterly? What, how often are they sent out?
They're sent out during the process, so when we get to a certain point. So there are certain benchmarks in this process. We run the file, we do the initial analysis, we see who's late at that time, we send out a letter, then we do it again, and then we do it one final time before we actually lien. And so each time we do this, we send out a letter letting those individuals know the exact amount that's due, because it's a moving target. Every month that goes by, the penalties and interest go up, so these numbers change every time we inform the delinquent folks.
So they're, they're getting these, and so they're not getting the letters when they get the bill?
They're-
Every two months?
They, well, they do receive the bill, and the bill will have the information if they are past due at the time and what the late fees and penalties are, but when we get to the actual assessment portion for the lien, they get an individual letter outside of the bill that lets them know, hey, you guys are delinquent, you need to pay this amount, or contact somebody immediately.
Do you agree with the assessment that it is embarrassing to come to that podium-
Absolutely.
-to plead their case in front of the council and the whole world?
That is why we created the form for this year, so that individuals that do want to speak or plead their case do not have to do so at the podium. They can fill out the form, and we can evaluate each request to see if they do qualify for the payment plan. And the qualification is basically that they are not on this repeat list of having payment plans and have not met the payment arrangement. And if that is the case, we call them directly, and we set up this payment plan and give them the opportunity to make the payment.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. See no more questions from council. I will open the public hearing at eight twenty-eight P M. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We do. Our first speaker is Ms. Melissa.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say that everybody's situation is different. You know, there's some homeowners that might be delinquent or whatever the case is, but everybody's situation is different. They all have different incomes, and another thing is, in regard to the job market, why don't they, why isn't there more jobs out here for people to keep up with their payments also? So many people struggle to find jobs day to day. My husband, for example, he's been looking for a job for the past two years we've been here, and I'm the one right now at the moment going to school for nursing. And I'm not going to lie, I'm delinquent, not very far, but I am. And we're struggling a little bit, not bad, but we kind of are. And that's why I said, everybody's situation is different. Some people need help. Maybe, maybe you guys can design a system for the people who are actually trying to make ends meet. Maybe you guys can come up with a system for people that don't have that much money at the moment, or that are getting a certain source of income, or, yeah, or just, or just trying to better their lives, but it's going to take a little bit of time. Because, like I said, everybody, everyone's situation is different, and of course, everyone, whoever is in charge of making those arrangements where they can either waive the fees or a payment arrangement, or lower their fees, or, what else is it? Or maybe, or come up with a plan to help people that live in the city, because some people are struggling, and I see it, I do see it. I'm not going to say that I'm high in mind because that's not the case. Everyone's different. Those people, the struggle never ends for some people, but I'm trying to make it to where I don't have to live month to month at all, and I don't want that because it's not comfortable. And I hope you guys can come up with a system for the people that, you know, actually are delinquent and need the help until they're able to, you know, say, hey, you know, I don't need, I don't need assistance anymore, or something, I don't know. Hopefully, there is some type of change, though. Or maybe the bill for the, for the sewer and stuff, maybe you guys can reduce it for the people who are low income. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melissa.
Thank you. Come on, go. Our next speaker is Mr. Raymond Wagner.
Welcome, Mr. Wagner.
So for nine eleven Keith Street, I would like, I'm trying to petition the council to, to dismiss the fees associated with that. From, from the, it was my mother's house, and she's passed away, and from the, from the date of her death, now, five hundred and thirty-eight days. I have a residence in Barstow, an apartment over on Fredericks, where I live, and there's been nobody to be at that house the whole time. So I would like those fees dismissed. There's been no trash to be taken out, nothing like that. The bill's over a thousand dollars, so if you need any proof, I have, I have the petition here for probate, and I also have mail for my address here in, here in Barstow, which I've been at for over two years. So with that, that's all I have. So if you could please get that dismissed. I can't afford to pay it. I don't want it to be leaning against the house, and it's going to, it's going to, it's going to come off the sale price, and I really can't afford that either. So if I could get that lien dismissed, I'd appreciate it. There's been no service, so I don't see a reason for payment, for five hundred and thirty-eight days. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Our next speaker is Mr. Lorenzo Perez.
Welcome, Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the homeowner at seven twenty-five Mountain Vernon. I also have a outstanding payment with you guys. I would like to see if I could get a two-week extension. I would like to see if I could prevent that lien, you know, towards my property. Within two weeks, I promise that I would have the full amount for you guys, and that's all I could say. I would really gladly appreciate for everybody to see if I could get that two-week extension, please. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
And our next speaker is Mr. Arthur Prince.
Welcome, Mr. Prince.
Good evening. I have some issues with the city on this matter. We do not owe you any money. You still owe us money for two years. We moved to our new house at twenty-seven seven sixty Bruce Art Road in April of twenty twenty-one. I paid for trash and sewer at our old address from May, June, July, and August of twenty twenty-one. Then I stopped paying because I was already paying BRTech at my county residence. In September of twenty twenty-two, I notified you of all this. I filled out your little forms. On October sixth of twenty twenty-two, you sent me a letter. You said you were going to adjust my bill to reflect the house was vacant. You never did. In that letter, you told me I would have to keep renewing my application of vacancy. This I disagree with. Now, why do I have to keep filling out these forms every month? I was talking with, I think it's named Jessica Seran, I may not have that right. She said it was your policy to hold my refund for one year. Why do you have to hold my money for one year? And it's been over two years, and I still haven't got my money. I complied with your vacancy procedures for the month that I paid, the house was vacant. I turned off the water and gas to the house at seventeen twenty sunrise when I moved out. I did not turn off the electric because I had a security system in there, and the security system needed- needed electricity. Jessica further said that the city can verify that the water and gas were turned off. You can verify that it's never been turned back on. How could we live in a house with no water nor any gas for cooking, cleaning, heating, or hot water? You continue to send us the bills, I consider harassment for trash and sewer charges, to the Sunrise address when you know my new address. Sending notices to a vacant house is not due process. A different issue with your billing. I was getting billed, I felt like I was getting billed twice for the same services. I hand-delivered three letters to the receptionist at the front window for the then-mayor, Dr. Paul Courtney. My letters were ignored, all three of them. I hand-delivered a fourth letter for the same man, this time it was a notice and demand letter. He finally responded with a terse, there's nothing wrong. I felt like he never actually looked into the matter on the one other Barstow resident that feels the same way I do. I also demanded a complete account of all my charges and payments two years ago. I've never received it. Are you hiding something?
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
We have no more comment on this item.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, do we have anybody else in public wishing to speak in favor or opposed? Seeing no one approaching, I close this public hearing at 8:36 PM. I'll bring it back to council for questions of staff. Mayor Protem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So I can make comments?
No questions.
Just questions? I'll reserve until we can make comments.
Okay. I have a question on the last speaker, Mr. Prince. Is staff able to give us more information on that situation?
I don't believe we have the information in front of us. I'll defer to Finance Director Harris.
I was just checking with staff to see if the individuals that made comments today, if they have filled out the form. The only way that we are able to get in contact with the individuals and research the issue is if we have their information. So we're hoping that the three people that spoke tonight filled out the form so that we can contact them tomorrow regarding this situation, especially you, Mr. Prince.
Okay. And seeing no more questions from council, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilman Noble. Go to council for questions, I'm sorry, for comments. Mayor Protem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So my comments are, I do know for a fact that there have landlords that have in past come in front of us and have called me personally when they have a vacancy. And they, they work with the city, but yet they get billed. So I know that there's, you know, understanding now that there, that we're, how much time it takes, but we're, I believe we're doing an injustice when we are being contacted by a landlord or by the individual that just spoke, and we continue to bill them. He said that he's worked with the city, he's worked with one of the staff members, I won't repeat her name, but one of the staff members, and this has gone back 2021. There is an issue here, and I think that we need to look into. Mr. Prince, he used to live on Sunrise, and is there a reason why we're, you don't have to answer it, but there, why are we saying that we can't give him a refund for a whole year? To me, that's, are we paying interest while we hold on to his money? Can we look into this, please? Because, you know, we just need to find out what the city knows so that we can, so we can close out this issue.
Absolutely.
Also, on Mr. Perez, he asked for a two-week extension, and, you know, I'm not sure if they're still here, but we should let them know who to contact. Did they fill out the card? If they didn't fill out the card tonight, can you please let them know who to contact first thing in the morning if this council says yes, that we will allow the two-week extension? Who is that contact?
So we actually have a staff member who was here in the lobby, receiving individuals who were interested in filling out the card or speaking. So Brenna, I don't know if you want to wave your hand. If you have not filled out your card yet, please see Brenna, and she will get your information so that we can reach out to you tomorrow. If we missed anyone, I don't know if we have any watchers on Channel 6. Please give us a call. I don't have the UB number right off the top of my head. But we do have a direct line that individuals can call to reach somebody directly.
Hi, my name is Brenna. You can contact the utility billing department tomorrow at
Thank you. And also on Mr. Raymond Wagner, Frederick's mother passed away. He's, I believe he said he contacted the city, but I wasn't quite clear on that. I would like for us to consider that one as well, to get ahold of Mr. Wagner. These three individuals came before us, and we should look into these, and especially to find out, why are we telling him we're holding on to his refund?
Right.
For a whole year? That's a concern. And the young lady?
Oh, yes.
The young lady that just spoke earlier, yes. And everybody has a different situation, and that's why we have this process, so that we can make, you know, so that we can ask the staff to, to work with individuals that came forward to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. Councilmember Williams?
I want to make it clear that I'm mad at the process, but not the staff. I get it that you're understaffed, and sometimes I have a tendency to, you know, seem a little upset. But when you got 13, $16,000 and neglected bills, that's not, that's, that's a choice. I don't believe that's, that's an option. I can see 100 bucks, 200, 300, 1,500, on up. I, I got a problem with it. So I understand what the public is saying, that people need help. I do believe the city has a program in place that you can call them to get assistance, and they'll be more than happy to do that. We're not heartless, but we're not rich either. We can't continue on this path. So please, if I offended any staff, I apologize. But that was a learning lesson for me to, to receive tonight, and I had no idea that that goes on until, you know, Councilman Noble. He always said, you don't know what I know. I'm starting to figure it out.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. So regarding whether we contract or in-house billing, there was a reason for changing. And I understand BRTAC was a billing. It was not a collection process. So those of us that have sat here before are not surprised by the amount we're seeing tonight. We've seen these amounts before. Again, BRTAC would be a billing agency, not a collection agency. So does not change the numbers. Regarding the processing of the liens, what should happen, and the reason we don't get paid right away, is we would put it on the tax roll. Eventually, the, if they have an escrow account with a lender, the lender would get billed. The lender would pay what the county bills, leaving a negative in that escrow account. So then, and this is probably going to happen a year and a half to two years down the road, their payment's going to go up, and they're going to call their lender and say, hey, I had a fixed rate. Why did my payment go up? And the lender's going to explain, your mortgage payment didn't go up, your escrow account went up. And they're going to explain, if they're a good lender, why. They're going to pull their tax bill and show them where the city put a lien on the property. So that's the process. That's how it works. That's why these things get paid later. And we see recurring, because again, they're back on the bill. You can see here, if you look at the schedule, there's a past balance, there's a new balance, there's fees, there's interest. A lot of these just recur. You see very few that it's the first time it's being billed. And then someone mentioned the 13,000. Councilmember Williams mentioned, yeah, with the fees, the penalties, it's 16,000. And that's a rather successful business here in town. Do we have ways that we go after the businesses differently than we do the residents when we have a big bill like that?
No, we don't at this time. But we are going to be looking at the process and looking at what we can do to streamline this.
Okay. All right. And then my recommendation is, if we do look at contracting, we'll look at contracting with a billing and collection agency. Councilmember Williams?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we could take that to rules and policy and make a policy, correct, versus residential and business owners?
We could look at this policy. I'll have to review again. I want to take some time to work with staff and come back with some information for council and recommendations for council.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Protem Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not sure if I can do it now, but, you know, maybe during my comments, because I'm going to ask for a second, to, a timeline as to when Ms. Clayton can bring this back to us. In two weeks, is that reasonable, or in a month, so that we actually can expect what would it cost to outsource the billing and for the collections? And so to be during the comments, so expect that to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. Councilmember Hernandez?
Our abstentions prior to our taking the vote?
The city clerk will read them out after we get a motion. I mean, after we call for the vote, yeah. After, so are we done with discussion? Who made the motion? Okay. Councilmember Noble, you made the motion? Okay. Councilmember Hernandez, did your motion include the four that spoke? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez. We have a second by Councilmember Noble. City clerk, before I call for the vote, could you read out the abstentions?
Yes, I have the list here. Mayor Silva, his abstention is from number 47, 48, 52, 54, 55, 312, 314, 321, and 322. Councilmember Noble's abstentions, 189, 632, 633, 649, 650, 651, 652. Councilmember Hernandez's abstention, 28, 32, 46, 67, 68, 69, 70, 76, 77, 80, 81, 82, 85, 86, 87, 96, 97, 101, 311, 312, 313, 314, 315, 316, 317, 318, 319, 320. Councilmember Williams' abstention, 59, 60, 61, 63, 285, 286, 289, 290, 291, 296, and 297. And Mayor Protem Rose' abstention, 598, 605, 606, 607, 608, 609, and 610.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number five, public hearing. Consideration for development agreement termination for commercial cannabis business operator Zengro Inc., continued from June 17, 2025. Staff's recommended action is that the city council adopt resolution number 5232-2025, terminating the development agreement with Zengro, attachment four, and direct the staff to take further steps to consummate the development agreement termination. If the development agreement is terminated, the city plans to assess its options for how to best use the property. City manager, Ms. Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I will turn this over to City Attorney Summers to provide an update, but my understanding is that we are requesting to continue this, and I'll let him give that information.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton and Mayor, council and community. This one, we have good news. Zengro paid the amounts of money that are issued, about $190,000 yesterday. They paid by check. The check has not yet cleared through the banks. Hence, the recommendation is to continue it to ensure that the funds are good, because their delinquency wasn't funding. They had not paid the amounts of money that were owed. They paid a check yesterday. So with that, staff would recommend continuing the item to the next regular council meeting, providing an opportunity to confirm that it, the check clears. If it, if it does clear, then they'll be in good standing, and well, that's great. And then we hope that they continue to not get in trouble again. If the check does not clear, then staff would recommend the council revoke the development agreement. Thank you.
Okay. So with staff's change of recommendation to continue, I'll still ask, does council have any questions of staff? With that, I believe our public hearing is still open. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
I do. I have one. Mr. Mike Hernandez?
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. You know, I have just one question. Why did you let this bill go so long? Why did you let it go for a year before you finally decided to do something? And if it's not paid, is there a lien going to be put on the property, just like you do to the homeowners in Barstow? I'd like to know what the procedure is. If they don't pay, do you put a lien on the property? And why does it take so long to collect your money? Why did it take us a year to collect this money? Aren't they supposed to pay it periodically? And who's responsible for that? Isn't it the building department supposed to bill them and notify you? I mean, right now, if a homeowner's 90 days out of compliance, it goes in front of the council. How come this, as an individual, didn't come in front of the council? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Do we have any more requests?
I'm sorry, we have no more.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, do we have anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposed? Seeing no one approaching, we will continue this. If so, is the motion by the council. But I'll bring it back first for questions. City manager, Ms. Clayton, are you able to answer the process in, or have staff answer the process in how this is billed and how we got to where we are today?
I would like to ask Community Development Director Heldrich to answer that, or give that information.
So a couple of questions were asked. The first one was, is why did we let it take for a year? Why did we wait so long to process? The payments are all due for, dispensaries are different from, they pay monthly compared to the growing operations, which is cultivation, manufacturing, those businesses themselves, they pay in December. So then they have 30 days to pay, which then puts you at the end of January. So they were truly delinquent in February of '25. This was one of those licenses that we, in that first wave that we brought before the council, it was inadvertently left off because the business operator is actually working or in operation. The other facilities weren't in operation, and that's why they were easy to identify. This one's been in operation, and the reason why this is so high is because this is the largest facility out there. And that's basically why it's taken, or that's why the dollar amount is so much higher than, than some of the other ones. But that's, that's basically the two reasons why it was inadvertently left off whenever we brought it back, or in front of council, I believe it was in March or April, whenever we brought the other ones forward.
Okay. So for clarification of council, I'm going to, I'm not doing it this time, but I am going to continue without objection. So before I do that, we won't go into discussion since there won't be a motion, but is there any questions of staff? Seeing no one, I'm going to continue without objection. With that, we move on to public hearing, item number six. Public hearing, annual renewal and reaffirmation of Assessment District Number One for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The staff's recommendation is that the city council take the following actions. Number one, adopt resolution number 5233-2025, attachment A, thereby approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026, Engineers Report, Street Lighting, Flood Control, Landscape and Street Maintenance, Benefit Assessment District Number One, and waive the full reading. Number two, adopt resolution number 5234-2025, attachment B, declaring the city's intention to reaffirm attachment B, declaring the city's intention to reaffirm and levy the collection of annual assessments in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six via the property tax rule in connection with street lighting, flood control, landscape and street maintenance Benefit Assessment District Number One, and waive the full reading. And number three, approve the expenditure appropriations in the amount of ten thousand five hundred for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six per the Engineers Report, eliminating, estimating revenues and expenditures, page seven. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to turn it over to Director Heldrich to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council. What you have before you is the annual report that is required by the city to introduce this assessment district. Every year, we have to bring forward the Engineers Report, and as you can see on your attachment, you can see our, or on the screens, you can see what the, those dollar amounts and what it looks like. So I know that it says in here levy against people's taxes, and of course, the items we just had, so it looks like a big negative. Unfortunately, no, it's not a bad thing. What it is, is that these people enter, the property owners, enter into an assessment, and they pay their fair share. It's all new developers, and they pay their fair share of lighting in the landscape districts that are throughout the city. So as you can see, those are the dollar amounts, and that is what it is on the screen. The Engineers Report is done annually, and I wanted to make one note, this is exactly the same report as last year's, and there is no increase. We are going through a comprehensive study this year with the engineering team to update our fees, and so next year's assessment will look a little bit different, but this is exactly the same as the prior year. And with that, I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Heldrich. Any questions from staff, by council? Seeing none from council, I will open the public hearing at eight-fifty-seven PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
I have no, no speakers.
Being a public hearing, do I have anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed? Seeing no one approaching, I close the public hearing at eight-fifty-seven, bring it back to council for questions. Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I entertain the recommendation by the staff, adopt one, two, and three, approving number three.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Noble to approve as presented by staff, second by Councilmember Hernandez. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to consent calendar public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a forty-eight hour notice must have been given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the consent calendar public comment?
I do. Our first speaker is Ms. Anna Fuzee, speaking on item eight, which is the second reading of the TUP.
Good evening, again. Thank you. So there's just some language that seems confusing in when you read the second reading adoption, "to require temporary use permits for events where alcohol beverages will be served and consumed on city property or facilities for event rental and use." It's a little confusing. Is that only if we're serving alcohol or not serving alcohol? It seems like it would say alcohol consumed on city-owned properties, which would include, of course, the Barstow Senior Center. But I don't really understand "or facilities for event rental and use." So is that to include the fact that we might rent out the facilities, so we need a TUP? It's not exactly what we discussed when I met with, I'm not sure what her name was, Amy, when they came to meet with us at the Barstow Senior Center a couple of, or a month ago when this was brought up. So I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, but just the language seems confusing, so if we could get some clarification on that.
We may have to have to do that during comments, in the council comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez, also speaking on item eight.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. I've got a question for you. Why do you require for people to get a license to sell alcohol on their property, and they have a contract that says that they cannot? So which one is it? Does the senior citizens have a right to sell alcohol, but yet their contract says they can't? So can they sell it if they get this? And is it violating their contract? That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
That is all the comments I have on the consent calendar.
Okay.
With that.
I'll bring it back to council. Is there any questions of staff before I call for a vote? And I will, if staff could please clarify Ms. Fuzee's question and Mr. Hernandez's.
On the, well, I'll turn it over to Director Heldrich to give more information on Ms. Fuzee's question as far as the alcohol related. Thank you.
So in regard, through the mayor, in regard to the citizens' question regarding the TUP on city property, alcohol, anytime alcohol is served on city property, it requires a TUP. Now, if she, if the senior center were, operators were to lease that property or rent it to somebody to have an event there, then they're required to have a TUP because it is not the senior center conducting that operation. Now, if the senior center wants to do bingo, for example, they don't have to have a TUP, because it's them running the operation. Now, if the senior center wants to serve alcohol during bingo, then they have to have a TUP. So the trigger for the senior center itself, anytime alcohol is served, TUP. Anytime they rent the facility out to somebody else, a private citizen, a TUP is required. But if they are to do their operations at the facility, then no TUP is required unless alcohol is served. And I hope I answered that question.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mayor Pro Tem Rose?
Thank you. It was my understanding that the city was meeting with the senior citizens in regards to the contract, because what we don't want is to have a conflict with the contract saying no alcohol, and then they're allowed to use alcohol. That was just brought up by Mr. Hernandez. So are we looking at that? Have we already looked at that?
We have not entered into a new lease agreement with the seniors. There is a proposed, but that is, I'll defer to City Attorney Summers for more information.
Yeah, so a draft lease agreement exists. It's in discussions. I believe we're working through a committee of the council and staff and the seniors on that. It's in, it's, while we're in negotiations, the city won't enforce any provision that conflicts with what this ordinance would say while we're in negotiations, subject to final approval by the seniors and by the council.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? Because if there's an agreement on file that says no alcohol, there should be no alcohol.
We don't have majority council direction to enforce that provision yet. That would have to be a different agenda item than this agenda item.
Okay, but, okay, so, but ideally, if a contract says no alcohol, that's what this council should uphold until a decision is made otherwise. Or can we do an amendment to the current contract that if this is approved, that this amendment would parallel what we're approving until there's negotiations on the proposed contract?
Right, so the amendment of the contract, a new lease, affects the same thing. That amendment is under negotiations, which would model or mirror this ordinance if approved, and would come forward for a future council vote. And we would have to have a separate agenda item to enforce strictly the current contract while we're negotiating the new contract, which we could set for future, for the next meeting for discussion further.
Well, I'm asking a legal question. I guess maybe I'm not understanding. If a contract says no alcohol, until we actually change that contract, shouldn't it stand as no alcohol on a legal advice, Mr. Summers?
We have the right to enforce it as an institution, but we would need majority council direction to enforce it. And I don't have majority council direction on that clause.
Do we not enforce it already if it's already an existing?
We currently do not prohibit the senior center from having alcohol at their events. They exist with alcohol at some number of events. We don't have majority council direction to enforce that clause in the ordinance or in the contract. So we would need majority council direction to enforce that clause.
So, so I'm understanding?
Which clearly I'm hearing, if I get a second from your request, if there's a second, we'll schedule that discussion.
Right, no, but I'm just, I'm sorry, maybe I'm.
So it violates the contract, but violating the contract isn't automatically, we still have to enforce it through a lawsuit, right? Reach of contract requires enforcement through a lawsuit. It requires enforcement through a termination notice. I don't have any direction to do any of that.
For clarification, the attorney is saying that the city is not enforcing it, and they'll take direction from council. Correct?
No, I understand that, but I thought that when there's a contract, we would just follow the contract, and we, since we know, but since we know that they're doing alcohol, we can't go against, I mean, we can't go after them. We know it. We're allowing it.
We haven't ever agreed to it either. We retain the right to enforce it. We would need majority direction to enforce it.
So do we pick and choose which contract we enforce and which ones we don't? I'm sorry, I'm just.
The council always has the right to choose which provisions to enforce, given its limited resources from enforcement, right? We only have so much resources. The council has to direct how we deploy the resources we have, and it's up to, it's up to a council decision whether or not to pursue strict enforcement of this particular provision of a contract while, as noted, it's under negotiation.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Counselmember Williams, questions of staff?
Yes, Ms. Heldrich, didn't we have that discussion, because they were already doing this in the past, that they were allowed, it's not going to affect the new policy that we were putting across? I thought we had that discussion. And I don't remember if it was rules and policy where we had it at, but I remember having that discussion because, huh? Oh, but.
We received council direction to negotiate a new lease that would allow for these events, including alcohol, under rules and regulations. And that's what we've been pursuing, is that negotiation. And while in that negotiation, we haven't enforced the strict contract provisions given the negotiation outcome. We would need to set a different item to have a different discussion if we want to change that direction.
All right.
Thank you, Counselmember Williams. Counselmember Hernandez, questions of staff?
Were we asked to do this last year? I have the dates when the requests were made.
So I do understand, even, I wasn't here, but that was explained to me, that that occurred. And I am working with the attorney's office to move forward with getting additional information, meeting with the lessee, so that we can discuss a new lease with some proposed provisions from, that the attorney's office has provided to staff.
Yeah, the draft exists on that front.
And weren't you asked to do that last year, sir?
Yes, I provided a draft to council and staff. Prior management did not move it forward. But current management is moving it forward.
And that's my concern, because doesn't the lease, they cannot rent that facility?
At present, yes, but it's the same as alcohol. The council majority has not provided direction to enforce that clause. At this time, pending negotiation.
And I understand that. But my thing is, and I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem, we have a contract. You were mayor aware of that contract, and that was last year. And we're here at this point right now. And why did it take so long?
I need majority direction to move forward with any kind of enforcement action on this kind of provision. I never receive majority direction to move forward with any kind of enforcement. I receive majority direction to move forward with negotiations, which we are in process with.
Well, I have a difference of what occurred, but that's fine.
If two council members would like to have a discussion about strict enforcement of the current contract, that request can be made, and we'll take majority direction.
Isn't that a little late, when we're having meeting in a day or two?
I'm not sure what meeting that meeting is. Is that a meeting with staff at the senior center level?
Yes, staff does have an appointment this Thursday to meet with the senior center.
So then that'll be the lease negotiations discussion, moving that piece forward. And then if that outcome is positive, then we'll bring it forward to an agenda. If the council disagrees, and we can set, we can enforce it. And I think at this point, the reality is, if the negotiations result in a successful lease, then we move that forward. If there's disagreement, or if the council doesn't, majority doesn't feel that there's support, then we enforce the current lease, which will prohibit alcohol in events.
My expectation is that this is resolved, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselmember Hernandez. Mayor Pro Tem Rose, questions of staff?
Thank you. So there's three council members up here, count three of us, that are a little confused, and it's kerfuffle, to say the least. But we have a contract, and it's not just with the senior citizens.
Well, this item is only, yeah, let's be careful about that.
Yes, if we have a contract in general, in general, we uphold that contract. We don't pick and choose, we shouldn't pick and choose, Mr. Summers, correct, on what we allow violations on a contract or not. We should, the contract exists, we follow what the contract says. However, Mr. Summers, if we know that the seniors are doing something outside of the contract, we know it. We're basically allowing it.
No, acquiescence, sorry, it's not, being aware of it and choosing not yet to file a lawsuit to stop it is not the same thing as agreeing to it. There is a difference there legally. We haven't yet filed a lawsuit. We haven't yet enforced it. We retain the power to do so. Simply acquiescence or passage of time doesn't create that ability.
I'd like, absolutely not. However, can a contract supersede an ordinance?
Other way around, the ordinance, the ordinance controls.
That's what I thought, the ordinance controls. So if we pass the ordinance, then their contract in that section would be null and void, because.
No, no, maybe I misunderstood the question. We have power as both regulator and landlord over the senior center. The ordinance reflects our power as regulator. The contract continues under our power as landlord. So if the contract isn't amended, then they still can't, unless we choose to amend it, or the negotiations fail, both need to be matched.
So when would it be appropriate, Mr. Summers, for us as a council to discuss this contract? Because.
My suggestion would be a closed session in the next meeting.
Okay, because to sue them is out of the question, in my.
That's how you enforce the contract.
I was asked to bring it up at comments, because the agenda's item is not the senior center contract. It's, it's, well, but it's not the contract. It's the alcohol as a whole ordinance, so.
Thank you for that.
Addressing the contract here would not be appropriate. So if you want it brought to council, I would recommend council comments to ask for a second. I see no more requests for questions of council. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item seven is the ratification of accounts payable expenditures. The recommended action is to approve and ratify expenses as audited for checks nine-nine-six-two-six through nine-nine-nine-two-eight totaling five million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, and wires one-one-four-one through one-one-five-six totaling five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars and ten cents. For the agency breakdown as follows. City, six million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Fire, two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents, for a grand total of six million, five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Item eight is. Item eight is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 1033-2025 of the City of Barstow amending sections 9.45.030 and 9.45.060 to require temporary use permits for events where alcoholic beverages, beverages will be served and consumed on city property or facility, facilities for event rental and use. The recommended action is that the city council adopt ordinance number 1033-2025, amending sections 9.45.030 and 9.45.060 of the municipal code. Item nine is a resolution to adopt projects funded by Senate Bill One, SB One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. The recommended action is staff recommends that the city council approve resolution 5235-2025, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 project list, attachment A, funded by Senate Bill One, SB One, and waive the full reading. And that is the end of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll move.
After this motion, a second, yeah.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Mayor Potem Rose, and discussion? Councilmember Williams?
Couple of questions for staff. Normally, I mess this up, but the city manager gave me a way to pull this next time. But I'm going to go to page 232, and American towing, flat tires. Are we not checking our vehicles at the city to make sure that we, and I don't know what vehicle it's for. It just says tire repair 9125, 9129, but it says the city. I mean, I, I know we're supposed to be checking those, checking those vehicles. But it's, it's a, it's a tire, a flat tire repair.
I'll have to get more information. I'll get more information.
I got more. I'm just getting started. And then page 235, check number, I guess, check number 99768, curb damage. I, I don't know what the curb damage is repairs. Is that to a vehicle? Is that to, because I don't think that person, that vendor does curb repairs. But I'm curious about that one. It was for $5,413.54. Again, I don't know if that's damaging a vehicle, we hit a curb, but curb damage has got the, someone's got to explain that one to me. But I'll, I'll wait for it. I'm a patient man.
Which page was that, by the way?
That page is 235, check number 99768. Again, that's $5,413.54. We're not going to have that answer, so I'll wait for it. American towing. Now, does the Barstow PD pay for the towing of vehicles out of a special fund, or does it come out of the general fund? Oh, that page, I'm sorry, that page is 251, check number 99828. Because it says, it says after hour towing PD, towing out of the sand, 9129, and then towing out of the sand, 8462. But if it was police, it would say police, but it says city. I just want to know if the officers are getting stuck out in the dirt or not. I just want to, you know, if they're getting stuck in the dirt, just want to know. But again, that was American towing. And then same page, 998230, 89832, car wash, Barstow PD, $55 for one vehicle? I don't know about that one. Because it doesn't say it only has one. Or it could be multiple, but just, but 55 bucks seems a lot of money to be washing a vehicle. If it is, I'm going to start washing some vehicles around here. And then my last one is page 253, check number 99839, Jeanette Hayhurst. And that is $5,750. And I'm seeing a lot of that. So if I can, and I'm seeing different numbers on that. It's not the same number all the time. It's, it's a totally different number every time I look at it. So if I can get those later on, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Potem Rose?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, because I've seen other districts, maybe not city necessarily, where the finance director is sitting here with the council or with the board. And they're able to, if there's a question like Councilman Williams had, they're able to go into the system quickly to see the supporting documentation so that it can be answered, because normally they were, they're answered on the spot, to say, oh, the police car got stuck in the sand and da-da-da-da, whatever. They're able to answer it relatively quick. Is, is that something, Ms. Harris, that we can do here? Is it easily researched while you're sitting there on a question? I know others, like I said, other school districts do it.
Personally, in my tenure, I have not seen it done that way. I would have to work with IT to see if we can get that set up in council chambers.
Could I, I'll just jump in really quick, sorry. On, on our system as it currently is, we don't have the invoices scanned into the system. If we did, we would be able to pull it up with a remote computer. We are working towards a conversion. We're going to put a process in place where we have the backup documentation in the system. So that could be, that could potentially, I shouldn't say potentially, we will have that functionality in the future. We're going to put a process in where the invoices are scanned. It doesn't necessarily mean the invoices will have the exact information that we could answer the question, but it will certainly give more information than what we're seeing on this. And we should have that functionality in the future with our new system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Rose. Councilmember Williams?
Let me apologize. I, I will, I will bring my question the day before we can have it, so I can get the answers and then I'll ask the questions out in public. So let me apologize for that.
I'm going to add one more. I believe, Mr. Hildreth, you'll be the one to answer this. On page 235, check 99764, is that, is that an IGSA account? It's not tagged
I don't have the documents in front of me, but if you, if you tell me what it, it reads, then I'll be able to.
It has, it does have Ford Irwin building for 190 electrical setup. It says advanced technical contractors. So it looks.
Yeah, it's, it's an IGSA. It's a, anything to do with Ford Irwin is, is an IGSA.
Usually they're tagged IGSA, it just didn't have that tag.
We ran out of character space here. We're only allowed so many characters per line.
Oh, and yes, yeah, I, I would just reread it to see what it is. Yes, it is absolutely an IGSA. It was, it was a project that they asked. They moved cubicle, they just, they did a project, but it is an IGSA where we get our, the 3% on top of it, and we get reimbursed for that.
All right, thank you. See no more discussion from council. I will call for the vote.
And the motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we move on to business action items. Item number 10, adoption of resolution number 5236-2025, intention to disestablish Public Improvement District Number 83-1. Staff's recommendation, take the following, council to take the following action. Discuss and adopt the attached resolution number 5236-2025 of the intent to disestablish PID 83-1 Exhibit A. Number two, direct staff to move forward with the disestablishment procedures and schedule a public hearing for the August 19, 2025 council meeting. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to turn this item over to City Attorney Summers to provide the presentation.
Yeah, and I'll give an introduction and then also to Mr. Hildreth. So this is a public improvement district that was formed back in 1983 to provide for certain improvements in the western side of the city. And it is recommended for dissolution as the work has been completed. And there's no additional funding coming from this particular district. And it, dissolving it would clean up the books, so to speak, as to this, the property line, the properties at issue. And I'll note, it was put in place to fund a certain amount of sewer improvements. Those improvements have been installed. I know there was a question raised regarding approximately $750,000 that was believed that to be owed by the county to the city. We have gone back and affirmed that all but approximately $210,000 of that was paid back as of 2006. And then that was pursued in 2005, 2006 era. And based on that information, plus staff's more recent confirmations, the balance of delinquencies in the district is down to less than $200, which is essentially zero, zero, given collectability realities. So with that, staff recommends setting by adoption of resolution and notice of intent to disestablish the district, which would then return at the August 19 meeting for a vote to disestablish it. And this is also about cleaning up the record regarding our upcoming general plan update, as we look at other infrastructure funding tools on a more comprehensive basis, taking this one off the books, given that its work has been done. We'll move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hildreth, anything to add?
Mr. Summers pretty much covered it all, but we're available for any questions that we, if there's any clarification that's needed.
Questions of staff, Councilmember Hernandez.
Why can't I get my $200?
Actually, I was talking to Ms. Riley about that today. We're waiting for the lax, the last tax roll that has gone through, and we might have actually collected our $200. It's just we're waiting for the county to tell us if we, it is 100, it was actually $167 is what the number was. But we rounded it up just in case. But we believe we might have captured the, the last of the dollars. So I could give you that update if we collect the $160. But it, it appears that we have collected all the revenue, or the money that we extinguished.
No, I, I appreciate the fact that, that staff did the background. Because I was wondering, yeah, as to when the payment. And it, it was extensive, so I, so I appreciate that. But yeah, we should, the county especially should give us our money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. See no more questions.
Mayor, if I could add briefly, staff also appreciates the, the reality that it was Councilmember Hernandez's long history with this, this district that caused us to raise the question and then get it answered appropriately. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions from staff, from, for staff from council, we'll move on. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
I have no comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for a motion. I'm sorry, any more questions? I'll call for a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, five zero.
Thank you. Move on to item number 11, amendment to professional service agreement with Placeworks, Inc., for consultant services in the amount of $327,435 associated with the general plan update. Staff's recommended action is to approve the professional service agreement amendment with Placeworks, Attachment A, for the general plan update and associated tasks in the amount of $327,435, of which $283,000 is reimbursable, leaving a fiscal impact of $44,435, which is available in the adopted fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. And number two, approved resolution 5237-2025, Attachment B, increasing the offset revenue and expenditures in the amount of $283,000. City Manager, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to have Director Hildreth provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The item you have before you is, is an augment, which is an increase in the price of the contract that the, with Placeworks Incorporated, that the city of Barstow has. Some of you may know, the city has entered a contract with Placeworks to do the city's general plan. The general plan is made up of multiple elements that create a general plan for the city, which guides the direction of the city for the next 20, 30 years. And you make amendments along the way. This is a full redo of the, of the city's general plan. So that's why it's an extensive amount. As you see, the initial contract was $900,000. However, during our process of rewriting the general plan, the, the BNSF project was presented and made public. With that, we have incurred additional costs. And that's where you see augment number one, augment number two, and then this is augment number three. During the, that process, we have to analyze the big project into the general plan. You can't write your general plan and leave out a, a project that can, could potentially double or triple the size of your city. So we have to analyze it, and otherwise the general plan would be null and void. So with that, though, it, all of these augments are reimbursable. So some of the augment, as you see in item, this agenda item augment number three, you see that the dollar amount is $44,000 for the city, out of that total $327,000. The reason for that is there's other analysis that are being done. And the city is already budgeted for that. In, in our, in our planning budget, we, we set aside $450,000 for this year's payments to Placeworks, which would, part of the initial contract still, that's outstanding, and then some of the augment. So there's still fund balance, and we, we budgeted accordingly for this. And so that's why you have the augment in front of you for approval. But that concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hildreth. Do I have any questions of staff from council? Councilmember
My primary question is, how fast are we reimbursed by BIG?
I can, I can take, well, I'm going to defer to Finance Director Harris. But my understanding is, is that we receive the bill from Placeworks monthly, and then we in turn bill BNSF for their portion, if there is a portion. We also bill them for the staff time that staff puts into this, the other consultants that we have, the city attorney's time, Merrill Johnson's time. So we, we take all the consultants and we send all these bills to BNSF. My understanding is, is they're current on all their bills, and that they pay, they pay when we, we send them the, the bill.
Thank you. That's the clarification. You know, I always get concerned about reimbursables, especially, you know, we want to ensure that our general fund and that we have the funding available. Since we know we don't receive money regularly, it depends, you know, property tax, sales tax. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Seeing no more questions from council. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from public?
I have one. That is declined. We have no more.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for questions of staff. Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Mayor Potem Rose. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes five zero.
That concludes our business action items. We'll move on to public safety updates. And why don't we start with our new police chief? Chief Kirby?
Thank you, sir. Sorry. Thank you. I do have one item. I'd like to invite everybody out to National Night Out. It's August 5. I believe that's also the next council meeting, unfortunately. It's going to be held at Dana Park from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There'll be music, interactive booths, safety demonstrations, and more. It's a chance for the community to come together with law enforcement. We should have both the sheriff's department ourselves, highway patrol up at the event, and it's always a good event.
Thank you. Seeing no questions from council. Seeing no questions from council, we'll move on to the fire chief, Cisneros.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. Just a brief update, kind of a brief from the 4th of July. Fire District did run about 28 different incidents throughout the day, throughout a 24-hour period, with 15 of those being fireworks related with one significant hand injury due to fireworks. But besides that, we did run various fires throughout that day, and we've continued the uptick in structure fires over the last week as well. So your fire crews have been quite busy over the last week, and they continue to be busy as the summer gets hotter and everybody's enjoying themselves with their summer fun. So that's my, end of my report unless there's any other questions.
I see no questions from council. However, I'm going to go back to the police chief. Could we please see the report for that day, July 4, of citations issued?
Yes, sir, and I'm actually prepared to give you some rough numbers for that day. There is an operational period that is not over until tomorrow, so I can come back with a complete report for the operational period at the next council meeting.
It's usually issued to council, but not in public.
Okay. Understood. So for that day... We seized approximately 215 illegal fireworks, issued nine citations, and made one arson arrest.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
With that, we move on to council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez.
I'm happy to report none.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Attended the Military Affairs Meeting on the 7th of July, and we discussed a few things. The military mixer that's going to be this year is going to be in Fort Irwin, and it's going to be somewhere around late fall. Still more to come on that, but that's more discussion on that one. And then the United States Veterans Support Group is having Kids' Day on the 19th of July, which is this weekend, at Dana Park. And those that have kids, please come out. They're estimating about $5,000 of gift card giveaway during that event. So that's supposed to kick off at 8:00. However, there's a program that's going to start at 10:00 with a speaker and some other things that's going to happen throughout. Got an opportunity to attend the Army's 250th Ball in Las Vegas this past weekend, and I will tell you, it was an outstanding event, well-attended. The highlight of the event was the Command Sergeant Major Jimmy Johnson, who was the second post commander, as you were, post-sergeant major of the installation when we were called Camp Irwin, not National Training Center. And this young man is 90 years old this September, and he looks like he was only 50, if that, you know. So tremendous. He was represented with a Trail Blazers Award for his many years of service, and he's still continuing to serve in volunteering at various nonprofit organizations. But if you have seen this guy, he didn't look nowhere near 90 years old. And then also got an opportunity to attend the Garrison Sergeant Major, the new Garrison Sergeant Major at Fort Irwin on the 10th of July, and his name is Demarcus Lau. He's the new Garrison Sergeant Major. He took Sergeant Major Palmer's place, who was here for a few years. And then also got an opportunity to attend this afternoon, the new police chief ceremony for about, what, about an hour of fun and games and highs and buys and things of that nature. But I definitely want to welcome to the team, and I know you're going to continue to do a tremendous job for the city of Barstow moving forward. Our next Military Affairs Meeting is going to be on the 12th of August. Well, let me, before I do that, there was a flyer that was passed out at the Military Affairs Meeting for you motorcycle riders and stuff. Kurt Suter is donating a brand-new 2021 Harley-Davidson Road King. They're doing a drawing. They're offering tickets for one for $25, five for $100. And there's a QR code. So anybody that's interested in the Harley-Davidson, you motorcycle riders, have an opportunity to win this nice bike that he's donating free to help with the scholarship and support the soldiers here at Fort Irwin and the Marine Base. The MMC out there in the Marine Base is having a flea market on Saturday, the 23rd, at the Marine Base, and vendors are set to start at 6:00 a.m. Doors will open up at 7:00 p.m. to 12:00. If you're a vendor, it is $20. Interesting parties, all you have to do is come down, and they have a contact number. If you want that, you can see me, I have the flyer. Our next Military Affairs Meeting is on the 12th of August. Our VBTA meeting will be next week on the 21st, and that'll be at 9:30 in Hisperio. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Williams?
I've got no committee reports, but I do want to talk about the Focus &amp; Park Flashback Friday. I thought it was pretty amazing, me and the mayor were there. What the city is doing is amazing, getting out to our public, trying to have events go on and give the public something to do. It was outstanding.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Rose?
I have none.
Okay. On July 2, I attended the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. No business for Barstow on there. On July 10, Homeward Bound, not a lot on the agenda. I don't think there was anything on the agenda. We had discussion about bringing in the, the county has services at the old mall, and it's kind of a wellness center, and they do have a room there, which they use kind of as a cooling center. So I'm going to try to bring them to the next Homeward Bound so they can educate us on what they do. There was discuss, or there will be discussion, because there was a question about moving the meeting from the 2nd Thursday of the month to the 1st Thursday, and the benefit of that would be when the city manager is attending the...
Correct.
Correct. We would be addressing issues prior to that meeting. So we'll be bringing that discussion to the next meeting also. And then there's a question about the applications going out for the CBDG grants, and did we answer that question there?
I did meet with the county yesterday, and for the funding for fiscal year '25-'26, they're still working on the paperwork. It should be done within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And then I just want to clarify, I do attend the Military Affairs Meetings. I'm not on that committee, but I've attended them before I was mayor. I'm a member of the ASOA, which kind of coincides with that committee, so I attend them as Tim Silva, and that's why Councilmember Noble reports out. He is the first on that committee, and I believe Councilwoman Williams is second. That's all I have. So we move on to business of the council. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I wanted to address the fact that whatever statements I make, I make at the dais. I do not talk to reporters, and I wanted that noted, so. Second, Mountain View, if we could check that out. The patchwork there, I don't know who is working on it, but there's issues, and that's across from the STEM school. The other thing is, I was driving down Armory, and it's in pretty good shape. So I wanted to find out what, how we did that street, you know, that I was amazed. There's no lines coming across, and so I've been driving more around. I'm doing more text, and I take the observer with me. Right. The other, the other is, item I would like to see that we look into is the Browns' property. I know that code enforcement got on them about having two driveways, and they seem to forget that the city was the one that put in the other driveway, because the sewer is on their property. And we agreed at that time that they were supposed to get the property with, my understanding is the right of way for the city to get on it. And so I, you know, so I would appreciate if we worked on that. I mean, so many years, we should have resolved that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything. I would just ask staff if we can just take a look at Rim Rock and Barstow Road. It needs some help, and if we can definitely take a look at that, I'll be, I'll be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams?
First of all, I want to say thank you for Jackie from coming from Appal Valley. It's a pleasure to see you out there. I hope you see what a real council does, not what they do in Appal Valley. To the police chief, can we get him six stars, or the rest of the guys around him will be five stars, because I think he's an outstanding option for us. I appreciate it. Going back to Mr., to Darren's comments in the beginning, he is right. I did, I did tell him not, I will not let anybody disrespect me, so he's right on that. What I don't understand is his comment that says that I had something for him. That I don't get, but it was a discussion out there. He is right about that portion of the comment. My option is he was District 4 representative. I, I'm elected by the people for District 4. My goal was to work with him to make sure that we're on the same page, and apparently that didn't work. He says, pick up a phone call. I mean, I've tried to talk to him six times in person, and every time I get blown off or looked at stupid. So that's why I said I won't take the disrespect. I wanted to clear that up. As far as his other comment about harassing him or whatever, who knows? But I don't know where he's coming from with that. Rim Rock, I do know that a month ago, two months ago, I do believe that Councilman Noble was talking about the medium that's looking like trash again. I know that was planned to be done last, last or this month, and something's failed back, not being able to do it, but they're going to get on that, and... Oh, did they? Okay, they're ahead of the game. They already started working on it. I appreciate it. I do want to say, you know, at times I can be a baby. I can be, you know, a little bit of, get my feelings hurt, so I want to apologize to Mayor Pro Tim for coming off some of her committees because I was a baby. So I think that's important to acknowledge it. I get my feelings hurt sometimes, even though it doesn't seem like it. To our city manager, I support her 100%. I don't care what y'all say out there. I don't care what you do out there. We got the best person for the best job, and I feel the same way about our police chief. I'm not, it is very difficult for someone to say that she's traveling two hours. I guess they don't realize you get on video conference calls with your staff. I don't think they understand that we call you different hours. I don't think sometimes we even care what time we're calling you. Weekends, perfect. To say that we lose two hours of traveling time and she can't do her job, it's ridiculous. Every one of us with technology now can get on our cellphones and have a video conference with anybody. I think those kind of comments are not good. I just don't think they're right, and I think that's a move to trying to degrade someone, and I don't like it. It goes same thing for our other staff managers, okay? We know we got some shorthanded situations. We appreciate what you're doing. We're trying to fix them, but I support these two 100%. To the fire chief, that's my, that's my man. He saved my life. He lied to me, but I keep saying it over and over and over. When you have people in our city that care so much about us as individuals, that's saying a lot. I'll take our police department and our fire department against any city, any place, any time, and I'll tell you, we're going to be, hands down, we'll win. To the news reporter, I'll do comments with you, and I'll do interviews with you, so you ain't got to worry about it. You need something, come see me. I am newly elected. I don't know what the heck I'm doing. I'm trying to learn this as best I can, and I appreciate the council and those reaching out to me and trying to mentor me. It's not easy, but I'm learning a lot. I'll get it in a couple of years, and hopefully we'll be okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Mayor Pro Tim Rose?
Thank you. I want to start off by congratulating our new police chief. Chief Kirby, welcome to our team, welcome to, back to our community. I don't believe you've ever left. Yes, let's all applaud him. I think it's great that he's here. He was sworn in today, and I mentioned to you, chief, earlier that the amount of people with this house was packed. We should have had it in a larger venue, but it speaks volumes of the respect and everything that everybody sees in you, that you have provided in your years before and what you're going to provide now. It speaks volumes of who you are, and so I just want to say thank you for choosing Barstow over and over again, and I wish you the best and your team. I also would like to, and I think we're going to need a second, to have a special meeting of some sort, however we organize it, to have a tour of the police department and of the fire department for the council. Until you actually go and have a tour, and if you know what it looked like before and what you, what it looks like now, I think that it makes more sense as to what more can we do to help to improve these facilities? And I have some ideas of my own, so...
I'll give you the second.
Thank you. So we can organize that as soon as possible. Also, August 5, it does conflict with the National Night Out, and I believe it's very important for the council members to be present. And so either, I'm going to ask for a second to, to have a, to cancel the August 5 meeting and reschedule it for a special meeting, or, this is an option, or we do not do a closed session. Can we do not do a closed session at the beginning to start at 7 and do the closed session at the end?
Yeah, the city manager and I have conferred with the mayor as well, and we can, the items that need to be done in a closed session can be done at the end or in a special meeting, so we can start the regular meeting right at 7 and thus avoid any trouble there.
So I would like to ask for a second to, to have the August 5, but do the closed session at the end of the meeting so that it allows the council to be present at least for 45 minutes of the National Night Out.
Second, Ed.
Directions given.
Thank you. Highway Station contract. I don't want it to be dependent on the mayor and who the council is. I have been asking for a contract for Highway Station. We need their services. They provide great services. They don't slam us. They, they are very positive on every aspect of our city, and so I would like to get a second for us to bring a contract to the city, and it mirrors what we do K-Duck. We have a second on that. Thank you. Outsourcing trash and sewer, I'd like to get a second on, and on the automated system information. A second that we bring, that our city manager has this information. City manager, would two weeks be, the next meeting be too soon or the following meeting?
The following.
So the following meeting, which would be August 5?
I'll second.
August 19.
August 19. Okay, so August 19. Thank you. So we have a second on that one. Contract with senior citizens, do we need a second to get that into closed session?
Yeah, so with a second, on reflection with some discussion, it would seem to be a closed session discussion of the contract negotiations, including the meeting on Thursday, hopefully successfully, and then all enforcement options. Mindful that litigation is the least option, least preferred option. There's other options on the way, so we can have that discussion with a second.
Thank you. Just asking for a second. Thank you. Handicap parking. Mr. Hernandez, I don't ignore what you say, and Ms. Hernandez, thank you for not talking to the reporter, because you know they're just trying to get dirt on us, and we, we work our things out here. We really do. Handicap parking, the assessment... Handicap parking, the assessment, we need to assess. I would like for us to assess the handicap, handicap park, handicap parking. Handicap parking here so that when individuals want to come into City Hall, that is adequate. I did ask about this before. I believe it's adequate, but I'm not the, I'm not the expert. I also would like for us to look at a ramp up front. How much would it cost for us to put some kind of a ramp, you know, in this area? So that anybody that needs, that, you know, cannot do the walk all the way down to the end of the building, back up, that is closer. So I'd like for that to be assessed on that. Do I need a second?
Yeah, we would need a second to bring that back.
We have a second. Thank you. So if you can bring it back, can that come back on next meeting or the following meeting?
I think we need a little time to look at the accessibility options.
Thank you. And the last thing, $500 code enforcement for the Browns. No one's called them back, according to what they said. Can we please get somebody to call them back? Thank you. And thank you to the staff for all your hard work because we ask for a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hernandez. It's not just Armory, it's also Muriel, that those streets seem to be holding up, even though we paid more for rubber on Rimrock. Rimrock's falling apart. So whatever they used, whoever they did that, when we go out for our streets in this fiscal year, let's take that into consideration if we can. I know we have to go best bid, but I also know there's a company that we asked to blacklist. Is that what you call it? I was not aware that Social Security Services were no longer available at the senior center. So thank you for letting us know that. I'm going to make a call. That is not fair to the citizens of Barstow. When they left here, they promised us services at the senior center. And then they took that away. Barstow is always hit when they do those budget cuts. And do we still have the bus that goes to Victorville for that service? Or did we take that away too? Did the city find that out? The city manager and I have had talk on handicap parking. They are looking at the situation here to see how we can address that. That was brought up at the last council meeting. So the next time we sat down and had our meeting, we discussed that. The property back to the Browns as far as what was taken when Riverside Drive was moved into their property and the property across the street being deeded to them. I talked to the city manager. She gave me permission to talk to this contract engineer. The contract engineer is working on that. I have been in communication with the Browns. Probably why they didn't bring it up tonight and it was brought up by other parties. But I have been in communication with the Browns. I don't play at everything on Facebook, so don't say we don't work with people. I've met with the Browns several times now. And we are working on that. I've also talked with the Browns about the fine, the $200 fine that they paid and then received the $500 fine. And I believe we're looking into that. Is that correct? On the $500 fine, why that was charged? Okay. Again, we don't have the answer for them yet, but that was brought up. And we are looking into that. We are working with groups regarding Route 66, being that next year is the anniversary. One of the groups is the Inland Empire Tourism Group, who had their annual conference here and brought a lot, a lot of people from out of the area to Barstow. And hopefully the city will be announcing a lot more there on who we're working with and the events that'll be happening. Also regarding the schedule for the city manager, her and I are in discussions regularly. Trust me, she is doing much more than a 40-hour week. And her drive, if she doesn't hit traffic, is one hour. I also do that drive to go to conferences. It's one hour with no traffic. Probably two hours most of the time, though, because of traffic. But trust me, she is working while she's driving. And that is all I have. So we will go on to the city management's comments and/or presentations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I first wanted to welcome Chief Kirby and to his first meeting. And I know at the last meeting I did announce that he would be here. I know that was stated earlier that we didn't make that announcement. But we are working on our announcements and getting better information out there. But that was circulated in advance and we're so happy to have him here. And it was a very nice presentation earlier tonight in a packed house and several, not only police departments, other police departments and chiefs and his former agency, BNSF, that was here to give him support. So we're very happy to have him. A couple other just updates. I know there were some comments made. One, I want to announce, I know the one mention of not having my assistant, the executive assistant. The recruitment closed last week. I'm so excited that we're moving forward with interviews so that Maribel can get some relief in everyone coming in to request meetings with me. One was Mr. Snell here earlier. I did call him several times and haven't been able to reach him. So it's, we just keep missing each other. But the schedule will get better once I can get some assistance in managing my calendar and taking more, handling more information responses for me on my behalf because it is pretty demanding. So a couple other items that were brought up. Yes, I know the Browns. I just wanted to touch on that, that is a separate collections agency, but we are looking into more information so that I can get back in touch. And I want to thank the mayor. We have talked about it and that is being worked on on several fronts. So another item that was brought up was on the handicap parking. And I have spoken to community direct, community development director, Haldreth, about this. It is a very costly process, but we have already talked about that. And so it will take some time, but we will absolutely be bringing that back for more information to council. On the, the request for the highway station, that's actually something that I spoke to staff about previously in that requesting proposals from both local radio stations, all, but I know we only have two, two local ones. But there has been some difference in how to manage that in the past. I, the way I operate is to get requests for proposals from both and have, I would like to equally distribute that, that service from the city to the, to support our local radio stations. So that was already underway and I, that will come back. On, there was one other item. The Rimrock and Barstow Road, we've also been talking at the staff level about also getting additional proposals out, requests for proposals that will provide additional services to the city to alleviate some of our staff for the most, more specialized services. So looking at that cost benefit analysis to what could be contracted out and have our staff conduct the more specialized processes and so that we can keep up on the medians and all of the other operation maintenance that we need to keep up on. And the last item that I wanted to announce is that I did get a notification that from the, we're getting a proposal from the federal lobbyists, but we've already been in regular communication. And they shared the good news that the House Appropriations Committee met and released the member requested community projects, which are earmarks, that will be included in the fiscal year '26 Transportation HUD Appropriations Bill under Representative Obernolte's request on the city's behalf. One item that will be included in the bill is the Barstow Route 66 Main Street rehabilitation for tourism and highway circulation of $1 million. And that committee is scheduled to meet this Thursday to complete that action on the bill. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. And with that, by consensus of the members, without objection, this meeting will be adjourned at the respectable hour of 10:05.